We'll get this meeting started. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight, but with unanimous consent, I would ask that before we start with the public hearings, we have a presentation to our Southington High School girls softball team. So with unanimous consent, I'll ask that we move that up prior to the public hearings. Is there any objection to doing that?
No.
It is summer, so we have to let the girls get back to what they were doing. Okay, so with that, if I could ask members of the softball team to maybe come up and stand right in front of us here, and then after I present the proclamation, we'll have a photo opportunity. So if you wouldn't mind, come join us right in the front here. Actually, you know what? If you don't mind, come right up onto the dais behind us.
Most of them are at practice.
Oh, no problem.
Well, thank you for everything.
So again, we have our SHS girls softball team, and we're very proud of them this evening. And before I present the official proclamation, I'd just like to share some other highlights that were shared with me, some of which were shared as recently as today. So first of all, congratulations to Chrissy Murato, who was named MVP of the state championship game. That's a great honor. We can give her a round of applause. Yesterday, the girls softball team was named Record Journal Team of the Year, and that's competing against teams from the fall, winter, and spring, male and female sports. They were named Team of the Year. That definitely deserves another round of applause. And our coach, Davina Hernandez, was named Coach of the Year. So with that, I apologize, I'm kind of turning my back to you. But we have an official town council proclamation. It reads, "Be it hereby known to all that the Southington Town Council hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the SHS girls softball team in recognition of winning the CIAC Class Double L Softball State Championship. This state championship marks the 18th overall for the program. The Lady Knights won this 18th state championship after defeating Norwich Free Academy 7-6 on June 8th at Fame Field, Frank DeLuca Hall in Stratford, to once again begin to become the CIAC Class Double L State Champions. The Lady Knights scored two runs in the first, third, and fourth inning, leading 7-6, and the Lady Knights were one out away from their first state title since 2015. They squeezed a foul pop near the Southington dugout for the final out. The team has continued a tradition of Blue Knights softball being the top program in the state. The Lady Knights' record for the 2019 season is 22 wins, three losses. Be it now proclaimed that I, Christopher J. Palmieri, Chairman of the Southington Town Council, on behalf of the entire Southington Town Council, hereby proclaim that today, June 24th, 2019, be SHS Girls Softball Day in the town of Southington. I encourage all residents, businesses, civic organizations, and schools to recognize the 2019 Southington High School girls softball team for bringing great pride to our community, and we honor them on this great achievement." You can join me in giving them a round of applause.
What's your first name?
Caleb.
Julia?
Thank you so much.
What's your first name?
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All your life.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
So our coach is going to say a few words, and then if we could, we'll gather the council for a photo.
Well, I didn't prepare a speech, but thank you so much for having us. It's a huge honor, and I know the girls and I were really excited to hear that this would be a day dedicated to them. So that's a great accomplishment, and thank you so much on behalf of our program. I wish more of us could be here tonight, but most of them are at practice for their travel organizations. So we are just so excited to make you guys proud and to make Southington High School proud, and we hope we could continue to do that. I just wanted to introduce the girls that are here. Kayla Pelletier is our catcher. Julia Panarella was our starting pitcher, and Nicole Greco was our starting left fielder. She did both throughout the season, but those were three of our starters in the state championship game. So without them, it wouldn't have been possible. So thank you for honoring us. We hope to be back again. Thank you so much.
We'll be back.
Congratulations.
They're all soft ones. Great future.
Right, babies, yeah. Teens.
Oh, thank you.
This was yours.
Oh. Then where did that one?
That was extra.
Slid them this way.
This was yours.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, audience, for your patience and indulgence. We appreciate it. It's nice to start off a meeting with celebrations like that, so thank you all, and congratulations again, girls. Enjoy your day, literally. Okay, so with that, we'll get back to our agenda, and we are going to start with our public hearings. The first public hearing is an ordinance appropriating $900,000 for the 2019 road improvement program and authorizing the issuance of $900,000 in bonds and notes to finance the appropriation. So we'll open up to the public in a minute, but I'll ask the town manager to give a brief overview, and then we'll open the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is part of our capital improvement plan and part of our $2.2 million road projects which are moving forward for 2019. As part of the process for any bond ordinance, it's already been sent to the Board of Finance, who approved it at 6-0, and it's already been to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which the town attorney will handle later on in your agenda. This is a vital piece of our road improvement program, and we certainly hope that the council supports it, as did the Board of Finance and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shoda. So with that, the microphone is now open. If you'd like to come forward and share your opinion with us, either for or against, we've just asked you to state your name and address for the record and limit your remarks to five minutes, if you wouldn't mind. So the microphone is open. This is for our first public hearing item.
Chairman Palmieri, is this just for the road improvements?
It is. There's public communication later in the agenda for any other topic.
Well, I understand that, but that's also for the John Weisell approval?
There's going to be, I'll announce that next. I'll close this public hearing and then open that public hearing.
Okay, so for the road improvements, I approve that. I think that should definitely be done. We are in sore need of a lot of our roads in Southington, and I know that Gary Brumbach started a program, or he either continued or started a program some years ago to allow so much money every year for that. And I think I can see the improvements as I drive through town, and it's really been a great improvement. It's really helpful for the residents and the businesses as well. Obviously, our populations are going up all the time. You have new homes being built, so this has to be kept up with. So it obviously is a necessity, and I absolutely approve of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela J. DiPaolo, 54 Delhunte Drive, President of DiPaolo Furniture on Center Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for the first public hearing item? Okay, last call. Any other comments for the first public hearing item for the roads? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing for the $900,000 for the roads. And now, our next public hearing item tonight is introducing an ordinance appropriating approximately $2.9 million for costs related to the acquisition of this building, the John Weisell Municipal Center property, and authorizing the issue of not to exceed $2.9 million in bonds and notes to finance the portion of the appropriation not deferred by the town council to be defrayed from the town's general fund balance. So for those of you that may not understand the technical terms, we had given an overview at our last town council meeting. The proposal that was before the council and ultimately passed the Board of Finance unanimously is to utilize our undesignated fund balance, which has a very healthy reserve in it, to cash fund this building. And what that would mean is we would be using our reserves to fund it rather than having to impact next year's budget and calculating, when we're talking about calculating the mill rate. So that's what we're talking about with potentially using the undesignated fund balance for that. So I'll turn it over to town manager unless there's anything.
Well, because there was an introductory video, this is actually the public hearing, so I am required to show the video again. I know some of you weren't here at the last meeting, and certainly none of these people were here at the last meeting. So that'll explain everything you just talked about, Mr. Chairman. So our Public Works Director, prepare.
Oh, yes, yes. Um...
The town of Southington has a great opportunity available to it. We are about to enter...
We want the same ones. I hope. What? I didn't have any luck.
Okay, you're open.
I'm sure.
How'd you play?
The town of Southington has a great opportunity available to it. We are about to enter our eighth year of the lease at the John Weisell Municipal Center. Part of our lease that we have with the building allows us to purchase the building for $2.9 million at the end of the eighth year lease. So what I'm hoping is that we could look at the property, we could purchase it, working closely with the Board of Finance, the Town Council, and the Board of Education. We could purchase the property, take it to referendum this year, 2019, and hopefully get the voters to support us. The reason, from a financial standpoint, why it makes so much sense is that currently we're leasing the property. We lease the property for the next 10 years. It's going to cost us about $3,572,000 to lease it for the next 10 years. If we purchased the property, obviously, we'd spend $2.9 million for it, and we save $402,875,000. We could purchase it outright, even if it's in fund balance. If we do that with the permission of the Board of Finance and the Town Council, it would be no surprise.
This one?
But even if we sold the project, it would cost $8,332,000, which is certainly a saving of $339,625 over leasing for the next 10 years. Remember, if we lease it for 10 years, at the end of 10 years, we don't own anything. If we either buy it through fund balance or buy it through bonding, we own the property after 10 years. I certainly believe, and hopefully the council, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Education, as well as the public, would also agree that this is a perfect opportunity for us to buy the building.
There's a couple benefits to having a municipal center, first of which is the synergy between the Board of Education and the general government, especially in the form of our Human Resources Department and Youth Services. The fact that they're in the same building and can work together collaboratively really has been a benefit to the town.
You know, besides the obvious ease of ability for communication, there's definitely synergy that's developed over time. The ability for me to just walk downstairs and talk to the building officials, building inspectors, the zoning officers, the public works staff, engineering, even Economic Development Director's been really beneficial for us, you know, for communication.
One of the things that I see as a big advantage are, literally, instead of just the sharing of space, is the communication that takes place. We all serve the residents of this community, and quite a few residents in this community happen to be children, which is the public school's main concern, but we partner with Youth Services, again, literally right down the hallway, and work with the students who benefit from those services. Part of that is steps and all of the services that fall under that umbrella. Part of that is working with students that might need some type of supportive counseling in schools, and in particular, the work between Youth Counseling Services and our People Personnel Services, Special Education, which is literally diagonally across the hall.
The public assembly room in our new municipal center allows both the Board of Education and the town to utilize the space for professional development, for ongoing training, but it's also a shared space for public meetings.
Being in the municipal center is very convenient for residents and developers. Having the land use staff on one location is a convenient format. You usually have to visit multiple departments, engineering, planning and zoning, sewer, of course, economic development, building department, having everybody here and having our fast-track program, which is very beneficial. It allows developers to come in before they're actually going to do something and get input from town staff. So having the town staff for land use on one floor has been very convenient for residents and developers alike. And the board of that upstairs in the Health Department is very convenient for demographic information. Everyone that lives in town knows about our good quality school systems. However, you know, when you're coming from out of town trying to learn about the community, it's very good location.
We do have folks who come in this building who are residents of the community that do not work for the town side or the Board of Education side, and they'll come in to go to the Health Department, and they'll come in to go to one of the departments that are downstairs in this building. And they come in, and I talk with anyone who comes in. We have student artwork in the hallways. It gives us the opportunity to talk with folks when they come in about the student artwork and just about schools in general. We always help one another. We always help people, you know, can I help you? What are you looking for? And I think people enjoy that, and I think it gives them a sense of everyone working together. Folks work very hard regardless of whether it's in, you know, building, or whether it's, you know, engineering, highway department, or whether it's at central office under the Board of Education umbrella. People work hard here, and I think it's moving in the right direction. I really do. And I do think being under the same roof is helpful.
Chairman, if I may. One question came up after your last meeting.
Yes.
Very good question. It talked about, can you look at one other area? And it came up with the Board of Finance, too, and that's if we took $2.9 million, set it aside, and used the interest rates for that, how would we do that? The numbers are in here, but if you read the minutes, it was not something favored by the Board of Finance for many specific reasons, but I do have the Finance Director here, and she can give her comments on that part of it.
That would be great. Thank you, Amelia.
Good evening, Town Council. Amelia Portileno, Director of Finance. I had provided you with a summary of the information pertaining to the school, and as the video referenced, we discussed what it would take to bond versus what we're paying for the lease. And then there was a third alternative of using fund balance. And as the town manager referenced, there was a question as to how much money we'd lose in investment revenue on the $2.9 if we did use fund balance, and that gets a little complicated. I did calculate that for you. An average on your spreadsheet, you'll see that over 10 years, for an average of between 1.5% and 1.9%, I came up with some interest figures for you. But the reality of it is that we'd have $2.9 million in our excess fund reserve for 10 years. That assumption isn't really realistic, because chances are that the future Board of Finance and Council would see the $2.9 and find other uses for it. So I don't believe that we could put $2.9 million aside and earn revenue on it to offset the cost of bonding unless we, of course, assigned that amount, and then you couldn't use it for anything else. So it would get very complicated, so I don't think it's something that we really need to look at realistically.
There was a comment made at Board of Finance, I think, sums it up. It simply said that we could end up in a situation where we spend the $2.9 and we bond the $2.9, spend for something else. So obviously, the Board of Finance felt that, their recommendation is in their minutes, they recommend that the undebted fund balance be used, with the caveat, the bond council, and we'll talk about that later on.
Okay, Mrs. Lombardi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the Finance Director, the Town Manager, and the Board of Finance for highlighting that fact for all of us. I think it's important, because for the average resident that just looks at these items, that probably would pop in their head. So I'm glad that it's been addressed. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I just have one question. So we have a triple net lease right now, right?
Correct. Triple net lease, correct.
Are we paying the owner's taxes?
Well, it's off the tax rolls, so technically, being off the tax rolls, there is no taxes being paid on this.
Okay, so even if the town leases a building under triple net, there's no taxes paid?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't use the fallacy of moving money back from the landlord back to the town again. We just take it off the tax rolls from an administrative standpoint.
Any other councilman comments before I open the microphone? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open up the microphone for any resident that would like to speak one way or the other for the public hearing that's open right now. I just ask that residents, again, state their name and address for the record, and we ask you to limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Richard Wasserback, and I live at 140 White Sale Drive in Southington. I've been a resident for 24 years. I know that in 2011, this was a controversial topic as to whether or not we would renovate this school, and I was familiar with it as North Center School and the condition it was in, and spend, at that time, this is as of August 8th at the Town Council meeting, $6.801 million to renovate. And if we had to go with the prevailing wage contracts for municipalities, jump up to $7.2 million. So we decided at that point to sell the building for a dollar, which we did to Borgeschi. Borgeschi's been in business for 74 years, I think that's what they're doing. They renovated this building, I'm assuming to the specs that the town of Southington had laid out originally. Does anybody know that?
That is correct.
It was.
They worked with our building committee.
Okay, they put a roof on. There's about 20,000 square feet of roof above this part of the building. They put a new heating system in. They air-conditioned the building, which it did not have previously at all. They put in modernized bathrooms. They met the specifications for handicap access into and out of the building. They put in high-efficiency lighting. They updated all the electrical. They put in an elevator, and they fixed the water problem that was leaking into the downstairs basement and the ponding in the back. They've done all this work at a cost that I don't know how much that would be, into the millions and millions of dollars, I'm assuming. So we've paid them already $400,000 a year, $3.2 million, and we're going to pay them another $2.9 million for a total of $6.1, minus their renovations. What were their renovations? $3 million? $2 million? $5 million? We don't know. But we were going to spend $6.8 million. They may have done this for $2 million, or $3 million, or a million and a half. And I'm just questioning, was this a wise expenditure in 2011? Mr. Berry, I loved his comment. This is the most complicated land deal in the history of the town of Southington. I agree totally with that. And I'm just wondering, was this a wise decision from the beginning? We seem to be spending so much more money. If he can do this for $6.1 million over an eight-year period between the lease and the purchase, netting out all of the improvements, we may not have had a good deal at $6.8 or $7.2 million. And I know putting everything collaborative together is a good idea. I did take a right past Beecher Street today, and I was surprised to see the building there. Does everybody know what's going on with that building? It's still empty. The weeds are up to my waist. I could barely turn around in the driveway, even the for sale sign is falling down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim McCloskey, 103 Ashwell Drive. If I understand this correctly, we've had two separate elections where the voters have basically said no to building a new municipal center. I also understand that this building, which hopefully wasn't worth a million dollars before we sold it for a dollar, was done correctly. Personally, I think it's the responsibility of the Town Council to safeguard the property of this town, not give it away for a dollar, and certainly not to thumb the nose of the electorate who said no twice. I agree with the gentleman who came before on the math. I also have a very good suggestion for anybody who doesn't like this, and that is not to do this, not to deal with the Town Council members who voted for this at a general election, but do it at a primary. Do it at a primary where your vote makes the most sense and where you can make your point. I've seen this when I was working in government involving a legislator who thumbed his nose at part of the population and got himself unelected. Thank you.
Pamela J. DiPaolo, 54 Delhunte Drive, President of DiPaolo Furniture, 8339 Center Street. There are a couple of things that aren't being mentioned here, and I find that I have to bring them up. First of all, I've lived in Southington for many, many years, and my family's been here for over 100 years. So I've seen all the history going on here with this building. When North Center School was vacated, and it went basically almost into the weeds for a long time, and all of you who are old enough will know that it was put into disuse for a long, long time, and then the town was talking about, well, what should we really do with this building? What should we do with it, you know? It's not going to be a school anymore, and of course, I would have hated to have it, see it go out of the town's possession, the way the Walgreens property did. And I was not in favor. I was one of the only people who spoke up in favor of not selling that property to Walgreens, and now I think the town really could use that property, and it's out of the public hands. That property was given to the town of Southington by St. Thomas Church over 110 years ago. Okay, so this property here, North Center School was deteriorating. So the idea was, let's use it for a municipal center, and at the time, John Berry, years ago, was on the Town Council, and he said, well, let's put up a referendum and let's approve the improvements to the town hall. That was voted down, I believe, twice. Please correct me if I'm wrong, John Berry.
It was twice. Actually, Councilwoman Trina was chair. She had tried it once. I became chair. I tried it once.
Thank you.
So it was failed twice.
Okay, so it wasn't that there was no effort on behalf of some of these very dedicated town counselors here to try to save the town hall and improve it. So then, the only choice was really, and it was maybe not the best choice, but this building turned out to be really a marvelous tool for the town, and I have been to many Town Council meetings here, and I think it is wonderful. Unfortunately, the money part of it, maybe that's not the best way it could have been handled, but it was the best way that it was handled at the time. Now that we're facing this $2.9 million deal, I think we should go forward with it. It's sort of like, what are we going to back up now? We're going to take this building, and after all the money that's been put into it, we're going to just let it rot? I don't agree with that. I think that this has proved to be a great space, and also, the parking is just, I mean, I had no problem parking here. At the town hall downtown, I'm sure that no one can get into a parking space without walking up Academy Hill, or, you know, I'm sure all of you know what I'm talking about here. So this has turned out to be a wonderful instrument to be able to have the townspeople get together. This is a great space with lots of room in it, and many, many great meetings have been held here. So I think it should go forward, and I'm not sure whether to tell you I like the bonding idea or paying it upfront, but I think probably I would opt for bonding, so that if some other emergency came up, we would have other money to put into that. So I would definitely say, please bond it. But, you know, there's no perfect answer here, and you can get up all day and point out the negatives of how come this building was...
a long, long time, and then the town was talking about, well, what should we really do with this building? What should we do with it, you know? It's not going to be a school anymore, and of course, I would have hated to have it, see it go out of the town's possession, the way the Walgreens property did. And I was not in favor. I was one of the only people who spoke up in favor of not selling that property to Walgreens, and now I think the town really could use that property, and it's out of the public hands. That property was given to the Town of Southington by St. Thomas Church over 110 years ago. Okay, so this property here, North Center School was deteriorating. So the idea was, let's use it for a municipal center. And at the time, John Berry, years ago, was on the Town Council, and he said, well, let's put up a referendum and let's approve the improvements to the Town Hall. That was voted down, I believe, twice. Please correct me if I'm wrong, John Berry.
It was twice. Actually, Councilwoman Triano was chair. She had tried it once. I became chair. I tried it once.
Thank you.
So it was failed twice.
So it wasn't that there was no effort on behalf of some of these very dedicated town councilors here to try to save the Town Hall and improve it. So then, the only choice was really, and it was maybe not the best choice, but this building turned out to be really a marvelous tool for the town, and I have been to many Town Council meetings here, and I think it is wonderful. Unfortunately, the money part of it, maybe that's not the best way it could have been handled, but it was the best way that it was handled at the time. Now that we're facing this 2.9 million dollar deal, I think we should go forward with it. It's sort of like, what are we going to back up now? We're going to take this building, and after all the money that's been put into it, we're going to just let it rot? I don't agree with that. I think that this has proved to be a great space, and also, the parking is just, I mean, I had no problem parking here. At the Town Hall downtown, I'm sure that no one can get into a parking space without walking up Academy Hill, or, you know, I'm sure all of you know what I'm talking about here. So this has turned out to be a wonderful instrument to be able to have the townspeople get together. This is a great space with lots of room in it, and many, many great meetings have been held here. So I think it should go forward, and I'm not sure whether to tell you I like the bonding idea or paying it upfront, but I think probably I would opt for bonding, so that if some other emergency came up, we would have other money to put into that. So I would definitely say, please bond it. But, you know, there's no perfect answer here, and you can get up all day and say, and point out the negatives of how come this building was sold for a dollar and all that stuff. But the fact of the matter is, in the 10 years, or is it nine years, Mark?
Eight years.
Eight years that this has been going, that this building has been in use in its new condition. It has well-earned its reputation for being to go on into how many more years? How many more years do you anticipate this building could go on in its existing, 20 years? Okay. So if you look at...
Southington buildings, how many signed buildings have you and I gone through? They're pretty old.
That's right. So if you look, if everyone in this room and the town councilors look ahead to the future, in the next 20 years for this building, it will certainly pay for itself over that period of time. Thank you.
Are there any other residents that would like to come forward for this public hearing? Last call, any other residents that would like to come forward for the public hearing for the municipal center? Okay, just to correct the last two speakers and to clarify for the public, there were two referendums that failed, but they were not for the municipal center. They were actually for the Town Hall. So I was on the Town Council at the time, and I would view what we were trying to do is be respectful to the voters, because the voters had said clearly they did not want us investing in the Town Hall, yet we still had problems to address. So the specific vote was for the Town Hall, not the municipal center, just to clarify that. Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move on immediately into our regular meeting. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Don Maselli.
Present.
Kelly Morrissey.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Michael Ricchio.
Present.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
John Berry.
Here.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here.
If we can stand for the prayer of Reverend Triano, who looks like has the prayer of the evening.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you would remind us always that we serve the people of Southington first, and not party affiliation or vain ambition. We ask that you would keep us from conflicts of conscience and dilemmas of ethics. May you continue to bless this community and her people. Amen.
Amen. And can I ask Councilwoman Morrissey to lead us in the pledge?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the minutes were sent out to us. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
And abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, we have three abstentions, if the clerk can note that. Okay, moving on to councilperson communications.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Maselli.
Okay, so I'm going to make your cheeks turn a little red now, Mr. Chairman. I just, I can't not state how proud I am of my friend and my colleague, Chris Palmieri, and I'm sure that everyone on this dais agrees. The announcement of his appointment as the principal to DiPaolo Middle School is just fabulous news. This is a boon for our students, our education program, our community. Anyone who knows Chris knows that those kids and your students, they're everything to you. And you can drive by the school day or night, and there's your car. I happen to know what it is, like, you know, see it front and center, and, you know, just your dedication and your support and your loyalty is fabulous, and I'm just so happy for you, and congratulations, and I just think it's wonderful for our students. Thank you for all you do for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Pulis?
Sure. I have two items. June 13th, I had the pleasure of attending the Southington High School graduation, which was relocated indoors because of the weather. I guess someone was saying it was like the second time in 25 years that that happened. And I have to say, I'm in education. At my school, we had this threat every year. They finally just said, we're doing it at WestCon because we can't risk the going inside. It's very small. And I couldn't, I thought that the school, Mr. Sternary and his team, Mr. Arroyan, implemented that graduation beautifully. And then our community members, the families, imagine your child, oldest child is, or first child is graduating high school, and you're told, you know, within 24 hours that you don't have six tickets, you have two. Everyone was just class act, all the families, and they had them in the auditorium and the gym. They were beaming the ceremony in. So I just wanted to congratulate not just the school administration for that, but also the families and the community. The other item I wanted to mention was, on June 18th, I had, I attended the first committee meeting of the Volunteer and Recruitment Committee Members Meeting convened by the Fire Commission, not at the Firehouse. Its effort, its mission of this committee is to find ways to recruit more volunteer firefighters to our team, and also look at retention strategies to keep those volunteers active. There were a number of volunteers that attended, which was great. Battalion Chief Eric Heath was there. There was a Commissioner, Al Erso, a member of the public, attended. And we had a very, very productive first meeting. We talked about a number of ideas that people had, very enthusiastic volunteers had ideas about how they can get those numbers up, talked a little bit about some of the website glitches, and we're confident we're able to straighten those out for the recruitment website, and just a bunch of other different public ideas. This committee is charged to meet quarterly, but we decided we'd meet again in July, because there's a lot of ideas on the table that are time-sensitive. So as we continue to meet, I will report back publicly to the efforts of this group, and hopefully, we can see a rise in our volunteer firefighters.
I just want to tag on to one thing that you said. I also had the pleasure of attending graduation, and again, I'd like to congratulate two members of the administration that are graduating this year too, Mr. Sternary and Mr. Shaw from the Southington High School Administration. So congratulations to both of them and their graduation from Southington High School. Any other, Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also, I know a few months ago, we hired a new energy consultant, so I would just ask the chair to work with the town manager for some sort of presentation within the next few months. It doesn't have to be July, but, you know, maybe at your discretion, if we can get similar reports that we looked at from Titan, we can update the public on what's going on with that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member communications? Okay, so we're moving to item five, as we already did the proclamation. So we have a presentation from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. I'm going to let Vice Chair Maselli introduce the presentation, and then we'll turn over the microphone to them.
Okay, so we have Joelle Ruck from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain here this evening. Come on up to the podium, if you will.
Nope.
Right over here. The Town of Southington has applied for a grant from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain in order to facilitate our new playscape at Memorial Park, and I'm happy to announce that the foundation has awarded the town $50,000. So please, if you would, speak to that.
Sure, thank you. Well, thank you for having me and for inviting us to come, and we are a community foundation that serves Berlin, New Britain, Plainville, and Southington. And when we were approached to help fund the new playscape, the fact that it was an all-abilities playscape that would serve all families and children of all abilities was something that was very appealing to our committee and our board. I know that the existing playscape has been around since about 1970. So I am very pleased that our board voted recently unanimously to award $50,000 over two years to this effort, and we couldn't be happier to be partners with you. So thank you all, and thank you to the public who supports us in our efforts, because without everybody here, we wouldn't be in existence. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your stewardship. You know, I should just tag on that the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain, like all of the community foundations within the entire state, because there are many in the different regions and areas, they are invaluable resources for the various communities and municipalities that they cover, so to speak. In this town, the Community Foundation has stepped up for our White Christmas in the community, Halloween in the village, LEAF, the Southington Education Foundation, SOCA, I mean, you name it, all of the great programming that we have in town, a lot of it is supported by your foundation and by your donors. Thus, thank you for your stewardship, and we're just very appreciative. So just to recap, this playscape was in our budget, our capital plan, you know, several years ago, and it was coming up for this 2019, 2020 year. We reached out to the Rotary Club, and the Rotary Club is giving money toward it, and now, as is the Community Foundation, and it's just so helpful. So thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo those sentiments. We are so very fortunate to have a partnership with the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. We wouldn't be able to do many of the projects that we have in this community that really benefit residents of all ages in our community. So if you could, please express to your board our appreciation and thanks for everything you do in Southington.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so moving on. Next, if residents remember, we had a presentation months ago, really, about the potential of bringing the bus route into Southington. We were talking at the time about Phase One, and we have another presentation tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to the Director of Public Works, Keith Hayden, first, and he will introduce some speakers that are here with us this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, instead of a formal presentation, what they're going to do is going to update us on what currently the state stands, and briefly talk about the bus route, but more importantly, answer any questions that the council or the public has to make.
Okay.
I'll start with Keith Hayden, and he can introduce the staff from the state, as well as the CROG.
Great. And then after that, I know we have a group of residents that have formed together, including our Disability Commission, that also have a presentation they'd like to give to us. So we'll start with Mr. Hayden.
Thank you. I'd like to first introduce Maureen Lawrence with the DOT, and she can come up and introduce the rest of the team from CROG.
Yes, hello. As Keith said, my name is Maureen Lawrence. I'm a transportation planner with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. My manager, Lisa Rivers, is also here, as well as Kara Radson from the Capital Region Council of Government, which initiated and ran the study that many of you interacted with, that looked at service not only in this area, but actually throughout the entire capital region. So...
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Kara Radson. As you might remember me, I was here in November. Again, the Capital Region Council of Governments, or CROG, we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the metro Hartford area. It includes 38 municipalities, including Southington. We did a feasibility study looking at potential bus improvements in the Hartford Division and the New Britain Bristol Division of CT Transit, inclusive of consideration of what a bus route could look like in Southington. We understand that there are some more questions from the council, so primarily, what we're here tonight doing is anything you have to ask, we're here. At this point, CROG did do the study, but the DOT is the owner and operator of the bus service, so Lisa and Maureen can more aptly answer some of the kind of procedural questions on that front.
So if maybe I can start with Maureen from the DOT. Obviously, with state funding, things are a little different now than maybe they were even in November. So at the time, we were talking about Phase One. So the first question is, if the council supports Phase One, then what does that mean in terms of Phase Two? Would the council need to go back to approve Phase Two, because there's confusion about what an introduction at Phase One would mean in terms of this council?
I think it would be best if I, I will answer this, but you might get us jumping in at different pieces.
No problem.
Because really, although I think the way that the study was done, and it was presented to the community, it looked at it in a phased approach more so that we, because the bus system would not be something that is only for Southington. It is all about connectivity and getting, you know, different communities and access throughout the entire region. The phased approach that was discussed, really, on a big-picture level, had to do with looking at certain short-term changes, things that maybe were low-hanging fruit, things that could be improved more quickly. Also, it's a funding thing, because we didn't have access to, you know, a lot of new funding. So one of the things that was looked at in that sort of Phase One really was cost-neutral, which to the world might mean, you know, no new funding, no new expense, but unfortunately, without new funding, additional expenses or changes would have to come by taking service away from somewhere else. So I think the thing, that the focus on this phasing really had more to do with trying to look at making changes to the existing system, some of which the system has been around for a very long time, and, you know, things have changed, corridors have changed, locations of access have changed. So maybe some of the things that are out there don't serve the right populations in the right way.
Okay.
But as far as, you know, if the council supports this Phase One, it's really, I think, more what was being presented was looking for support from the community as to the need and interest in service, because although the state, you know, we do fund it and we oversee the transit service throughout the entire state, we're serving the community. So the location of bus stops, the location of routes, but also, we look for the communities to work with us, maybe when they help to define where things might be developed. It would be really helpful if those things got developed in corridors that are being served, as opposed to trying to develop, you know, some other locations in the town, maybe, that might be further from service, but then they might have a population either that needs to get there, or workers, or other reasons that if they were closer to the service that already existed, it would be beneficial. So we work very closely with towns all the time, trying to help balance those, you know, interests and needs, not only the community as you look for development, but also what would make sense.
Okay. So just to back up for a little bit, and just explain for the public's sake, if people are new, when you're talking about cost-neutral, I understand operationally, Phase One potentially could be cost-neutral, because we would be shifting the route from Bristol into Southington, from Bristol down West Queen Street in town, and then out from the Bob's Plaza into Plainville. So that's where I think the cost-neutral piece that you're talking about comes in. So as a follow-up to that, from the DOT, is Bristol in support of that change?
So I don't believe that, the study that was done, yes, in this case, when CROG looked at that particular corridor, they did identify things that they thought, maybe some changes, whether it would be frequency or span of the service day, you know, different things about the services that are currently provided that might be able to be adjusted and changed, that could potentially free up some funding to make addition somewhere else. First of all, I think it's important that we sort of tell you that some of those things that were proposed in that study by the consultant team may or may not actually be able to be implemented exactly as they were proposed, because we work with a multitude of operators, we have some union contractors, we have some non-union contractors. So there's different things that we would have to look at as, with our operators. We can't just necessarily make all of the changes exactly as they're presented in the study. The study really looked at, you know, what is out there today, what changes have been going on in the communities or in the service area, and then are there things that they would recommend that be reviewed and looked at that could potentially allow us to make expansions of service somewhere else? It isn't absolutely necessary that that route in Bristol or Plainville be changed to make some back addition into Southington, but we would have to make cuts or reductions somewhere to add any new service anywhere without getting new budget through the legislature for our operations. We just don't, we can't just add service, just even if we felt, we have places where we really know we need to add service. Maybe there's, you know, overcrowding on vehicles, there's new areas that, you know, really need to be served, but we don't have that control without getting that funding from the legislature.
So the reason I ask both of those questions is because I think we've heard there's a need for members of our community to expand bus service into Southington, and I also know that there is restriction with the state budget. So that's why I'm asking. Generally, it seems like Phase One is a cost-neutral proposal. Again, I'll say operational, because I know you'd have to build the station in the Bob's Plaza for the bus terminal, you know, the bus stop. But aside from that, which is a fixed cost, and once it's built, it's built, essentially, that's why I... that's why I'm asking if anyone from DOT has spoken to the officials in Bristol to know if they're supporting it. And the reason I say that is because I don't think any of us here want to pull something away from another community
Right.
and look like we're, we want it, and we're taking it away from them. That's why I think it's important for the council to hear, where does Bristol stand with potentially this proposal?
Can maybe speak to it more from the study perspective?
Yeah, there hasn't been any kind of official action in Bristol, however. The city was involved in the study, as was our sister Council of Governments, the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, where Bristol falls under. But Bristol and Plainville were both aware of the recommendation, and actually saw value to it on the Bristol side, the route as shown. And again, as Maureen notes, the routes as shown may not, in actuality, be exactly along those lines. Our study was a feasibility study to demonstrate an option that could be doable, but not the, necessarily, the ultimate routing. But the, as shown, does go through some neighborhoods in the kind of southeastern part of Bristol over near ESPN, that doesn't currently have a level of service that Bristol would like. So, it actually adds it for those communities. And Plainville also indicated a desire for access to the northern part of Queen Street, but to kind of get their residents into Southington, there was value seen from the Plainville side as well.
Okay.
So, they were aware of the effort, as was going, the Town of Berlin and City of New Britain were involved as well.
Okay. So, tonight, there's no, there's no action on this tonight, because obviously, we're in taking, the council's in taking a lot of information. Is it possible to reach out, and I would say probably someone from DOT or CROG, reach out to someone from Bristol, just to ensure that their community is aware and supportive if we move forward? Again, I don't want it to look like this community is pulling something away from another community. And from what I understand, they're actually supportive of it, because it would create interconnectivity between our towns.
Right.
But I want to make sure, through the official lines of communication, that that does happen.
Absolutely, yeah. I can work on that.
Okay.
And also, any types of service changes that we would do, adding, reducing, fare changes, anything that is, we do have a public requirement, a public process, that we would have to go through. And that, that has not been met by the work that has been done, and that we would work with the municipalities involved, the operators involved, or potentially, you know, the resources we work with, on how the routes, you know, even if on a map, it might look like a certain particular route makes sense, we would bring in operators with experience that would look at it, and they might be like, this doesn't, this particular doesn't, location may not make sense for, whether it's, like you said, I mean, we'd have to look at stops.
Right.
We'd have to work with, you know, possibly landowners and things, potentially, for if the vehicles need to go in and out of a particular location. We also, at DOT, have a strong focus on complete streets, and if we're putting in new service, we want to be sure the environment around the stops are accessible to, you know, all people, all abilities, if we can, you know, if we'd like to, we would want to see things like crosswalks, or we'd look at the environment around the route, too. I mean, so there's a lot that would go into defining exactly what that route would be, as well as, you know, who it needs to serve, what are the key locations along the route, all that would still have to happen.
Okay. And then, finally, with me, and then I'll open it up to any other council members, but I think we are talking a phased approach, and I reached out to Speaker Simowitz myself, just to find out where the funding is at, as far as potentially doing any type of action from this council. And I know the first step is, they want to know that the local government supports this bus route. So, I think we're talking two things, short-term, potentially Phase One, and then, longer-term, you know, potentially looking to expand into Phase Two. So, that's why I'm asking where, what the level of commitment, if we commit to Phase One, is in terms of Phase Two. So, would that need council support, again, if we support Phase One tonight, to move on to Phase Two, or is it just implied that the support is there?
Well, actually, that was my concern, because as Maureen spoke, it almost seemed like the whole concept of phases is not really accurate.
Right.
Is that correct, Maureen? So, the idea of phases really is not accurate?
Yeah, I think that the theory from our side with the phasing was, we wanted to show options, we were charged with kind of, what could you do with no additional kind of hours of service? What's the best you could do in that scenario? And then, what further would kind of be a more ideal routing? So, that's kind of where the whole Phase One idea came. It was that sort of cost-neutral from a fixed route operation side. It is worth noting that there would be costs associated with the paratransit side of things, which I did mention during my previous presentation. So, just because it's a neutral cost on the fixed route side, that paratransit piece would have additional operational costs, because it would be covering an area that doesn't presently have that service, and therefore, it would need to be expanded, too. So, again, the phasing is, was intended as kind of the best way you could do, cost-neutral, and then kind of what would be the more ideal scenario, from a operational and service standpoint. So, it's, the DOT was involved in the study, but as Maureen stated, its actual implementation might not look like either of the phases, to be honest with you. It could be that it found, through the public process, through funding availability, that there was a different routing that maybe made more sense. Ours was, again, it showed a feasible option at the cost-neutral, and then expanded levels, so.
Absolutely. So, just, just so I'm understanding what we're looking at now, because this gives a little bit of a different look to it. So, we're saying that should we approve this proposal, we get it off. There's not phasing in, we get it off. We get not only just the bus route to Queen Street, but then we also have the paratransports within our town, at an additional cost that I guess we pick on.
The town does not have a local match to pay for transit service. None of the towns in the state do.
The state would pay for it.
The state would pay for it.
Okay.
Except for, no, but there is not a local match from the town.
So, it's really just a vote, whether or not we would like to go forward with the bus route, because we don't know yet what the route is going to be, it's going to be open, we don't, nothing's concrete.
Go ahead.
I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding.
So, the town council, I mean, I'm getting, there's a lot of uneasiness about this. I would say that you can tell us however far you want to go. If you don't want us to put bus service in the town, we're not going to do that. That's really up to you. How far, how far you want us to go is where I'm at.
The way it was presented initially, the way I saw it presented initially, that there were phases, and so, the first phase was to get the bus route to Queen Street, and then, at a future time, Phase Two would be to get the paratransports within the community. So, there was, there was kind of a checks and, I felt
Right.
checks and balances within our community, so that if there was an issue or a problem, we could talk about it, and resolve it, and go on. But that's not what I'm hearing.
Right. I think that what the, to clarify a point regarding the paratransit, any fixed route service is required to have complimentary paratransit service, three-quarters of a mile on either side.
If I can interject, because we're getting off-track again, we're not talking about paratransit. I know that's the benefit to the phases, paratransit. We're not talking about paratransit. The question, the question is pretty specific. If this town council commits to Phase One, are we automatically committing to Phase Two? And I think we've asked that, and
No.
Okay.
But I think that what the action might more appropriately be is, is the town interested in exploring the concept of transit, and what the best first route could look like?
Right.
I think that's kind of the better way to frame it, is not necessarily Phase One or Two as shown, actually, there's a third phase that's just a little bit north, but I think it's more a matter of, is the town open to the idea of exploring what a first phase of transit could look like in this town, be it that Phase One as shown, or a modified version based on feedback from the council and the public process that Maureen referenced?
Okay.
Does that help?
Sort of. Again, in my talks with the speaker, because of costs being frozen, the way he explained it to me is, really, Phase One, as presented by you, the last time we were here, would almost be cost-neutral. That would also potentially allow the council to try adding the bus service in our community, and see how it goes. And then, to Councilwoman Tranel's point, and then, at six months, a year later, we can come back and say, check, check in, how are we doing? Now, do we want to move on to Phase Two? That's, I think, that's, I think, is what we're looking for, and I don't know that I'm really hearing that.
And that's the only reason I referenced the paratransit piece with the Phase One, was because that piece is required, that even, anywhere you have the fixed route service, you must have paratransit service.
Correct.
So, with Phase One, while there would be no, it would be cost-neutral in terms of the fixed route, there would still be additional costs for that complimentary paratransit, because there's still routes where this service would be coming from, so that paratransit area would remain the same, and be expanded south across West Queen.
Okay. And I will tell you, and we're going to hear shortly, and I will absolutely give the group a chance to speak, but that's the main need in this community, is the paratransit. That's, the adding the bus service is a mechanism to get us to paratransit for residents in need in this community. So, we're well aware of the paratransit piece, but, but again, I'm just trying to make sure we have the appropriate information, because I feel it's a little muddy right now, that the information's being relayed to us.
Sure.
Mr. Rickell?
Yes, thank you. My comments not directed to you ladies, thank you for your presentation. I have to say, Mr. Chairman, it's one of the most confusing presentations I think we've ever had. So, the way I'm understanding, through some comments that were made tonight, is that there's almost a foreglung conclusion that the council wants public transportation in Southington. I don't know that we've had that full discussion. I think that before we ask these ladies to come back again, the council needs to decide, does it want public transportation? And then, perhaps a committee set up to organize the facts and figures and everything else that would come, so that we could, I mean, this, we're not learning anything tonight. It's kind of confusing.
Sure, and that was why I recommended that maybe the action is just what you've stated, is that it's, does the town, does the council want to move forward with exploring?
But in order for us to answer that question, we need answers to our questions.
But we're not getting any answers.
Right, but we, the problem is, they don't, we can't do the, it's a chicken-or-an-egg situation that we found ourselves in, I think.
I understand that, and I'm just saying that I don't think the council meeting is the place to have that, that. Like, we have our discussion, or get some facts that we can read, but I said this to the committee when they approached us, the immediate need in Southington is paratransit, like, we need to take care of our people that can't get to their doctor's appointments. If and when we ever got bus service, they only go three-quarters of a mile out. So, I also said, it blows my mind, in today's day and age, that we're even having this discussion in 2019, when companies like Uber and Lyft are developing, they don't have it yet, they're developing paratransit services that would serve the needs of our residents 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year-round, and not expand yet another failing public debacle, the bus service in the state of Connecticut. Like, we're here tonight, we're going to, we're going to develop eco-environmental systems with sidewalks, and coverings, and benches, and, I mean, we're talking millions, and millions, and millions of dollars, to keep expanding a system that doesn't pay for itself, when we should be having a discussion, not just here in Southington, but in Hartford, on how to take advantage of the private sector, so that we can actually give our patrons, our taxpayers, unbelievable service for far less money out of their pockets. But yet, we continue to, we'll just jump on the bandwagon, and we'll expand the bus service through Southington. I think it's wrong. I think it's a, it's a failure when it comes to our people that need it. They have to figure out how to get themselves within that three-quarters of a mile radius. On certain days, I wouldn't want to put my relative on a bus with five other people to go to everyone's doctor's appointments, sit there all day, and then come all the way back. I'd rather figure out a way, in the state of Connecticut, to, if we have to, subsidize rides for these people, for far cheaper, and give them great service, not this.
So, I'd ask you, we have members of the Commission of Disability, they have a presentation, so
We have questions.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we'll continue our questions, and then, we'll let them give their presentation as well.
And I would just, if I am more than available, if any councilors want to have conversations offline, outside of this forum, I am the principal transit planner at CROG. I'm happy to speak with any and all of you. I'm also a Southington resident, as I think I mentioned in November, so I am happy to work with any of you offline, if you have specific questions or need more details, or or
And I assume that you have worked with the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. George was very involved.
Okay, Councilwoman Morrissey.
So, I think my question is around the other councillors' questions, but I'm hoping that you can answer it more poignantly. Who decides how far and where the bus stops go?
At the end of the day, it would be the DOT.
So, you do not have to come to the council to say, we would like our bus stop to go to X, because you just decide?
I, again, I'm not with the DOT.
DOT decides.
But while that is theoretically true, there are, with limited dollars, they are not going to force it into a town that is not supportive and interested in it. They would take their resources and put it elsewhere. So, while theoretically, yes, that could happen, it is not
I would love to.
at all likely, because they would not put in the effort and finance into a service that is strongly opposed by a local area.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Hold on, Councilwoman Pulis was waiting first, so, Councilwoman Pulis, and then, Councilwoman Derry.
So, this is the way I see this, and that a vote for Phase One, going around Bob's Plaza, is essentially a vote for public transportation in Connecticut, in Southington. So, like, there might not be money now, but if funds came through some source, and they say, oh, now we have the surplus of funds, they could say, well, we're going to put stops all on these spots, if we were to say, yes, we support Phase One. I just, I want to make sure that that's clear. If we vote for Phase One, are we voting for a public transportation in our entire town? The possibility of it, the possibility of someday, someone deciding, we're going to expand.
Someday down the line.
And it would not come back to this body for like, well, what do you think about going?
Well, as Maureen said, any substantive change to the system is required to go through a significant public process, including conversations with this body.
I just want, it seems that people up here, we don't know what we would be voting for, we just want to, you know.
It wouldn't just be, you wouldn't wake up one day, and suddenly, there's buses everywhere.
Or against, we need to know.
This is right.
Right. Or against, we just need to know, if that's what it means. If a vote for Phase One, which seems minimal, seems to help out Bristol and Plainville, because they've expressed interest to get into that part of town, it would certainly help some residents in Southington to have that, but does that mean we're voting for the whole, potentially, could that mean that it would lead to the whole thing? And I think that's what people are ambivalent right now.
Right, and what's challenging, again, is that if you vote for Phase One, that, first of all, a vote for Phase One does not guarantee that that is coming anytime imminently, to just be clear, as Maureen kind of hit upon it, there's a whole process that the DOT would need to go through to kind of verify their ability to do that, and to do the whole public process. So, it could come that you vote yes, and then, there still aren't buses. It's not a guarantee. But again, if you vote for Phase One, and then, sometime down the line, there is recognized need to expand the service, there would be this, the process, again, with the public, with the council's involvement. So, it does not give the DOT free rein to, well, they, again, it's so challenging, because hypothetically, they could, but they're not going to without a process. They can't without a process.
Does that include a public hearing, when you talk about a public process?
We're, the public hearing in Hartford, I mean
No, it's local, it's local. It's required to be local.
Organized by DOT? Who organizes the public hearing?
It would be a DOT public hearing.
Of course, yep.
Okay. Councilman, Councilman Beattie.
I have one question, kind of just more as fact-finding. You guys have referenced traffic studies, that you guys have done in connection with this bus line, I assume, correct? Maybe more towards the two DOT representatives?
No, no, this was just a feasibility study, again.
So, does this feasibility study say, obviously, the legislature's going to take up in special session tolls? So, I assume DOT is going to do some sort of traffic study on arterial roads in Southington. Is this going to take into account a traffic, proposed traffic study? I mean, I don't want to vote before I know that, I guess, is my question. Now, we're going to have tolls and public transportation?
Tolls do not mean public transportation. I don't, public transportation, they only fund roads and bridges.
No, no, I'm saying from pure traffic point of view, as a person who lives in Southington. That's what I'm trying to say. So...
Are you concerned that the addition of buses on Southington roads would impact traffic and therefore, is that...
Yes, yes, exactly.
Would you mind just talking into the microphone for residents that are watching at home?
We, you know, we would, we do not, when we look at putting, you know, a bus route in that would typically operate maybe once an hour in each direction or even half an hour, I don't think the impact on traffic would be so great that it would hit the threshold of a, of a traffic study.
And I agree with what you just said right there, but my concern is, is that if you add tolls plus the buses, now you've created a traffic issue. I just don't know if, I mean, you guys are the experts, you probably have the traffic studies or will eventually.
I have to admit, we are not involved in tolls at all. The tolls is a different area of the department. You know, the work that we do in transportation, transit planning really focuses on the areas that we operate bus service in. We operate a variety of styles of bus service. You already have the commuter express buses in town. We already, you know, work locally with those. We actually just did quite a bit of work in one of the...
I think you answered my question, so I think, thank you.
So, I mean, but, so that's really the area of our focus. And even the comment about the bus stops, most of our bus stops, and I don't think there was a vision that these stops would be significant infrastructure items. I'm not sure that they would even warrant a bus shelter in most cases. But we do look at, the complete streets that I mentioned actually doesn't have that, anything to do with public transit. It's not coming from public transit. It's the DOT as an organization and the federal government is asking us to be more aware of our streets and that our streets are used by all. That includes cars, bicycles, pedestrians. And therefore, there's a process within DOT that is beyond public transportation that is, as roads are resurfaced and go through their sort of normal maintenance process, that they are looked at and that the intersections and crossings are looked at. So that's not specific to public transportation, but we do have a voice in that. And if we were to be adding bus stops, we would want those locations to be, the people looking at the road maintenance to know that those are something they should consider as they would work through the, this road system. I mean, that's all. That was the only comment I made there.
Okay, so at this point, I think I'm going to ask our residents to come forward and give a presentation. Thank you, Ms. Chiro, for being very patient.
Just kind of like, not what I expected.
And if you could, Ms. Chiro, just start.
Chiro, 330 Annalese Avenue, Southington, Connecticut.
George Poharak, 1297 East Street, Southington.
Ryan Rogers, 216 Old Turnpike Road, Southington.
Okay, so let's just take it down a notch. And thank you DOT and CROG, but we have done eight months of studying. We could have answered your questions, I think, I hope. Don't know the answer, though. That was a great question, if Phase 1. I get the sense, this Phase 1 thing, just listening to this again, it isn't, Phase 1 was just mentioned because it was cost neutral. I think we either approve transportation or we don't approve transportation. I think that's what it really comes down to, in my mind.
Thank you for that.
I just think that's the answer, after all the research we did. George is like...
But Councilman Pulis, but the point is, I think we need to hear that officially from the state, so we can't take that.
But I think Phase 1 was only, in my mind, was only brought up, and we're going to talk Phase 1. When I talk today, I'm going to talk about Phase 1, Phase 2, whatever. But, you know, let me just go through what, we've done research, we have information. Let us, just listen to what we have to say as, you know, okay. And it's kind of speechish. I'm not going to just talk, I'm going to try to talk about. So I'm going to begin, it's like a speech.
Okay.
I spent a lot of time, we did a lot of work on this. Okay, thank you Chairman Palmera and the Town Council for adding this topic of public transportation to your agenda tonight. You're probably sorry you did it. I want to begin with a quote that was recently made at a regional meeting by the Executive Director of Capitol Region Council of Governments, CROG. He said, quote, "The Connecticut Transit Map, when viewed in its entirety, resembles a bloodshot eyeball with a large empty spot at its center, and that spot is the town of Southington." That was said in public. That was the end of his quote. "Our town is lacking in the area of public transportation. We know that. In fact, we're the largest community in the state without a fixed bus route." Not necessarily something I'm happy with, but "For the last decade, the Commission on Disabilities has fought for the restoration of a fixed bus route so that persons with disabilities can receive paratransit services, which we've talked about. The CROG plan is partially a result of that fight, and it's time to take action. Our committee is not actually part of the Disability Commission, we're part of it, but it's called the Southington Supports Public Transportation. We were formed after hearing from a group of disabled adults at a meeting in our library last year. When asked what their number-one concern was, they unanimously responded, having a lack of transportation in Southington. They complained that they're stuck in town. When we looked further, we realized that there were several other groups in town that needed a means of transportation, so we formed this group, Southington Supports Public Transportation. We're a small group representing town residents from many different backgrounds. Whether it be the youngest among us struggling to find a means of making it to work without spending his paycheck on services like Uber or Lyft, or a senior citizen finding it difficult to navigate their way to appointments, even make it to the grocery store within the 72-hour notice required to request a ride from Calendar House, or those citizens with disabilities struggling to gain employment in or out of town because an employer isn't willing to take a risk on hiring them without a reliable means of transportation. And it's made up of those who simply would much rather just take a bus ride than an anxiety-ridden commute during rush hour. We represent all of the above in our committee. The simple fact is, a fixed bus route would significantly benefit a large variety of citizens in our community." Now, there's been talk about phases, oh, God. Okay, okay, CROG's plan involved phases. Phase 1 was cost-effective, I don't even need to go through all this, was cost-neutral, but limited, it's only limited to Bob's Plaza. It would come from Plainville into Bob's Plaza, go up West Queen Street, back towards ESPN, and that would be Phase 1, okay? It only covers not more than 7% of our town. Only 7% of the people in Southington live on Phase 1, which is only 3,100 people. So we have 40, over 43,000 people. That doesn't cover very many citizens if we have Phase 1. We realize this would be at minimum a first step in the process, but we urge our, we urge the council to deliver a resolution endorsing all phases of this plan, which would extend bus service from Plainville, for those who don't know, you guys already obviously know this, but from Plainville, down Route 10 into downtown Southington, to Plantsville Center, up towards Fast Track, turn around in the Sliders Fast Track parking lot, come back down past JFK, go back into west, downtown Plantsville, then head up towards Ark and go up, up West Street, back to Bristol. It would just be a loop. It wouldn't go inside streets, it would just be one loop around. And that would, that would provide transportation for many more citizens, obviously, than Phase 1. The initial phase entailed removing an underutilized route in Bristol, which, Chris, you made reference to, in order to provide services in Southington, and that's why it was cost-neutral. You covered a lot of this stuff already. The latter phases of the plan would be such a minimal raise in the department, now, I'm saying this, and maybe the DOT would disagree with us, but it would be a minimal raise in the Department of Transportation's budget, which we looked into all this. We're not just making this stuff up. We have estimated a raise to taxpayers of less than a dollar a year in your state taxes. So we did all, George did the crunching of the numbers, and if you pay $10,000 in income tax today, you will pay 97 cents more if we get an additional bus. So there's your money. It's like, it's not going to cost a lot of money. And, whatever. It's important to remember, it's important to remember that we already pay state income taxes that subsidize buses in 99 towns in Connecticut, but not in Southington. So it doesn't make sense that we pay income taxes for them, but we don't get the service. Okay, so over the past few months, a small group of volunteers from our committee posed this question to residents and businesses in town. We asked, "Do you support restoring bus service to the town of Southington?" We asked for support for the entire proposal, all phases, that whole bus route that I described. We just didn't ask them for the beginning phase. To date, we've collected 700 petition signatures from residents. In over 60 businesses, we went to four or five plazas in town. We talked to business owners. They signed a petition that says, "We would love a bus to come in." I mean, people were so excited about it. TJ Max Plaza, they're like, "Are you kidding me? I can't hire kids from Bristol. They can't get here. I can't get kids here." So all the, they were very excited about it. They didn't think, oh, a bus will come through here. It was, we had really positive responses from everybody. And so, you know, that was good. So we also, we have six, we also have 60 businesses, 700 signatures, and after speaking, we did speak to Bristol's Transportation Commission. So to answer your question about Bristol, we had them at meetings with us, and we've spoken to them, and we have learned that not only are they all for having a bus come through, but one of their largest companies, ESPN, they told us, would be thrilled to have service through Southington for employees commuting through New Haven and New York. So as you can see, we're not alone in this fight. We understand there's going to be reactionary objections, as we heard tonight, to this plan, but the benefits that public transportation will have on our community far outweigh the negative effects. Greenwich has public transportation, Farmington has public transportation, Avon, Cheshire, Plainville, Grant, you name it, all of Fairfield County have buses. Their quality of life is pretty good. I've heard that maybe the quality of life wouldn't be good in Southington if we had a bus, but their quality of life is pretty good. But the ugly truth is that people often leave our town because they can't get anywhere. We have a lack of public transportation. Public transportation would allow our residents freedom from dependency. It would allow them to, the ability to seek employment outside of town. It would allow our citizens an ability to seek an education, entertainment, and most importantly, medical services anywhere in the state of Connecticut. Without a designated fixed bus route, none of that's possible. And the best part, we all talked about this already, but I'll say this for those who don't understand paratransit, the best part of offering a proposed bus route is that it would include federally funded paratransit. That means minimally 57%, which we've done, our engineering department was kind enough to crunch all our numbers, 57% of the town's population, those living within that three-quarter mile buffer of the bus route, if they're disabled, would be able to access a private bus, private, not dropping 10 people off at one time, a private bus to take them to any doctor appointment in the state for $3.50, and their caregiver rides with them for free. So we have 5,500 disabled residents in town, never mind our senior citizens, and we're denying them the right to that service. So it's important to remember that a bus route is a public service. We need to provide everyone with a viable alternative means of transportation, especially for the least fortunate among us. Without a fixed bus route, the disabled who can work and can get a job, who need to travel for medical appointments, or they want to attend college, or they might just want to travel for entertainment, have no means of doing that without the help of family and friends. And I don't think anyone in this room would like to be that dependent on anyone else. No one wants to lose that. So in review, CROG has proposed a bus route that would service our town for the first time in 50 years. They have or they will present their plan to the Department of Transportation, and it will be of no cost to the town of Southington. The only measure the town must take is to inform the DOT and CROG that we support public transportation. I'm sure you will have questions for us, but I pose the following question to anyone who opposes this measure. Does your reason for not supporting this bus outweigh the benefits to our young people, the benefits to our senior citizens, the benefits to residents with disabilities, and the potential for a positive economic impact on our town? Please consider what we've presented when you make your decision. You have the power as a town council to act and make a difference in the lives of those you serve, and the power to do the right thing for our town and for those without a voice, and for those who have the most need. Please make the right decision. Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Nancy, because I love the information that you provided was very helpful. So thank you for your diligence on this.
Just, just one...
And George and Ryan. And I see Mary in the audience, a couple others.
There's one statement in the CROG plan that stands out above all others, and the CROG plan is yea-thick, and it reads, "Explosive growth in housing as well as commercial and industrial properties has transformed Southington into the, one of the larger population employment centers in greater Hartford. This has contributed to increasing congestion, and there is no transit service in Southington aside from a commuter express bus. Transportation options are necessary to alleviate this as it is, as is fostering land use practices." That's the strongest statement you could make, aside from the issue of the disabled. And in terms of the cost, we've been told it's $2 million added to the state's transportation budget, which represents 1/10,000 of 1% of their budget. 1/10,000 of 1% of the DOT's transit budget would be for that, for Phase 2.
We also met with the Economic Development Committee. We met with the Economic Development Committee. We met with several organizations in town. And we, one of the policemen, was it, was it the police chief? I can't remember who was on the committee.
It was Bill Palmera, I believe.
Yeah, because it was your committee.
It was the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee.
That was it, correct. Thank you. Yeah, 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 that's who it was. Thank, it was the Chamber of Commerce meeting. And he said he would work with DOT. His comment was, well, they wouldn't just put bus stops. Because someone asked at that meeting, well, where would these bus stops go? So when the state, we asked the state that question, where, how many bus stops? They said a route like that could be eight, 10, nine. It could be in plazas. They have to determine that, to be determined if the bus route gets, ever gets approved. But the police department said, we would do that with them. We would decide where they would go, what would be the safest place to put these. It wouldn't just be a random, let's just build kiosks and stick people underneath them to wait, you know, so.
Right. Well, because our police department is our traffic authority, and actually, we have the chief in the back of the room.
Exactly.
If you had any questions.
I just wanted to say too, because it felt like sitting in that chair, that we put the cart way in front of the horse when we started talking about this all. I understand a lot of you are in the dark about this, because I was just about a year ago until I met George and he started talking about this subject. It's, there's a lot to dig into, a lot to digest, I realize that. We knew that there wasn't going to be a vote on anything about that tonight. We just wanted the opportunity to talk and kind of present our case. And I think the most important thing to realize is, like they said multiple times, there's no set, they have a proposal. They don't have a set plan for you to say yes or no to at the next meeting or going forward. They're asking for your interest, really. So when you're saying, if we vote on Phase 1, well, this haven't, we're not even there yet. What we're trying to do, and I agree a lot with what Councilman Ricchio said before he came out and vehemently opposed public transportation, it sounded like, was that if we have a kind of committee formed among you to work with DOT or do things like, that'd be great. That's the steps that we're asking for, to get the ball rolling and get some of these services for the people in our town that we've obviously proved that they want to an extent. We've only really been collecting petition signatures and signatures from, from businesses for a month or two at the most. So there's plenty more people out there that do support this. So thank you for your time.
Just a quick point of clarification. I am not vehemently opposed to public transportation, so don't put words in my mouth. I am for a much more cost-effective way to provide transportation to the public.
Councilman, Councilman Barry?
One of the issues they kept, I've heard it mentioned maybe 10 times or more, cost-neutral. Is that, what do you mean by that? Is it because you're taking routes out of Bristol and you're going to bring them into Southington? So there's a feeling among the experts that there's some routes in Bristol aren't doing good, but for some reason, they're going to do good in Southington?
There was a fast track route that went alongside of a transit route, and they said that, this is what we were told, this is what, you know, right, George? Am I right?
Well, there's, there's multiple changes in Bristol that they can make, including the fast track route that makes it unnecessary for some of these other routes. So they eliminate, and the CROG people can speak to that. They eliminated some routes and changes.
Because it's really hard for me, because we all know, public transportation in Connecticut costs money. Taxpayers subsidize it. You know, that's, that's just a fact.
Taxes for the 99 buses right now?
Yeah, I mean, you could argue that that's wrong. You could argue that that's just how it works. So I mean, there's two arguments to that. The other issue that I'm concerned about, and it was talked about, is these, a lot of these buses, if goes forward, are going through predominantly residential areas. Some places on West Street are highly residential. And you talked about Plantsville and the, so I am concerned, as a policymaker, to say, well, just trust the experts. What, the experts at the state of Connecticut DOT, they're going to be okay and put the bus stops in the right spot? I mean, I think there is a feeling among residents, no, they don't really trust government, and they don't really trust state government, and we really don't want to give the power to bureaucrats to tell us where the bus stops are going to go.
We were told by DOT that the, DOT would work with the town.
Okay, they might want to work with us, but they ultimately have final...
The decisions would be made with the town at the table. And I mean, you could look at...
Yeah, I'm not saying it's true or not. I just think, if, if I'm going to be voting on something with a promise, it makes it more difficult for me when I have a resident who's a constituent that lives in a predominantly residential area, and they're going to end up having a bus stop in front of their house because they're right near a cross street...
I've driven a proposed route scores of times, looking for that, that issue. And I don't think on West, on West Street there, there's probably not going to be a bus stop in those residential areas. It's going to be, it's going to be target. I mean, you could look at a map and probably...
But just put yourself in my shoes, that, here, and then we get a call, why, so if you're telling me, you know, I just want to cover all my bases, because I answered to a lot of people, I have not gotten an abundance of requests for public transportation emails. Now, certainly, all of you have gone out there and spoken to people, and I think public transportation is important. You need public transportation in, in our society. So what you're doing is fantastic, it's admirable, and it's important for so many people that rely on public transportation. So I'm not opposed to anything that you've said or anything you did. My concern is just making sure the proper safeguards are put in place. So do I feel that I've got a comprehensive and in-depth plan that I can say yes? No, I don't think I have that yet. I'm not there yet. And if we do vote and say we want public transportation, that's it, I think. And I think the DOT is going to, is going to say, they proved it, we're going to go with it. And I think the DOT is just going to say, they proved it, we're going to go with it, thank you, Southington, and that's my fear. And it's a legitimate fear as a policymaker, because people in Southington, I don't think have warmed up to some of the, some of the issues of public transportation, especially since a lot of our policymakers have been so, you know, not really on board with what bus transportation is all about. So it's just, it's just a concern. The other issue is, they keep talking about Bob's Plaza. Okay, well, I've been in Bob's Plaza, so a bus is going to turn in there and turn around? I mean.
That's not been determined.
Okay, well, okay, so you know what I'm saying? You're saying these things as if they're true, and they're not.
No, no, bus stops are true.
Okay, okay, but you know, it can't go in Bob's Plaza, because it has to be reconfigured and have to be, and who pays for that?
Yeah, no, it wouldn't.
It's going to come down, one bus an hour, down Route 10.
Okay, but we don't know any of this. It sounds good, and I just, I'm only, I'm only bringing up these issues because it's important to me as a policymaker. I'm a Democrat. I think public transportation is important. I'm not opposed to public transportation, but if we're going to have it, I think we have to make sure it's done right and there is proper oversight. We're not used to it. You know what I mean? This is brand new, and just to say yes and then give the green light to DOT, I think could become problematic.
All right. First of all, George, Ryan, Nancy, I want to thank you for a fact-based, thorough, and informative presentation. I think the information you presented to us is very helpful. I would also ask to our colleagues here from DOT, you've heard some of the questions we have tonight. I think we need responses to those. If you could direct those to us through Mr. Hayden, we'd appreciate that. Council members, I would ask you, if you have any further questions other than what was already addressed tonight, if you can get those to Mr. Hayden by Friday, that will allow some time for the manager and I to make a decision whether this is on for action at the next agenda or not, because it depends on some of the information that's presented. But tonight, obviously, we're in no place to move forward with that.
But how will you hear from the public and other people that?
It would be, it would be on a council agenda, which is why I think it is important.
You have to have action when you have discussion? Does it always have to be an action the night of a discussion? So if we had people come on July 8th, you had it on the, on this discussion?
If, for example, we were to act, it would be on the agenda, so it would be public, and we would take action after public communication. So that would give, that would, but that's good, because that would give residents a chance to speak to us.
You don't get a chance to speak unless you're going to take action.
They could come any meeting, Nancy. Like, if you guys wanted to encourage people just to come talk to us.
Any meeting, public communication.
Talk tonight, they could, anytime.
A lot of them need a ride.
They do, they do. It's true. We were trying to get people, they're like, well, I can't get there. We're like, well, I'm not picking you up. But, yeah, so, okay, but if people could come to the meeting next, two weeks, you don't have to take action on it if people came and talked? Because we have been talking to people about July 8th meeting.
No, we don't. I mean, but Mike is 100% right. Any meeting, we have public communication, it's open to any resident to talk about any topic.
At the end of the whole night?
No, it's in the middle of every agenda. It's right on the agenda, public communication.
Right, perfect.
And anytime we take action on anything, we don't take action until after public communication. So you, any resident will see any item that's before us on the agenda, anything we're going to act on, and we always do this so they give you an opportunity to speak. I'm not saying we're going to take action at the next agenda. I don't know. But what I'm saying is, whether we do or not, you absolutely can come to the next meeting and talk during, during public communication.
Thank you. All right, thank you so, go ahead.
Don't forget emails and phones, too.
Yes, that we know, we're working on that.
And we have been receiving emails, by the way.
You have not, or you have?
We have.
Okay.
From constituents, yes, certainly.
Can I make one point of clarification, Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that at no point was the councils, like, when I say council, the council of governments, I apologize, the terminology is the same. Yeah, when CROG began this study, there was never an intention to be disingenuous or anything like tricky with like showing a route or not showing a route. There was actually a potential, when we first started this study, it could have shown, no, there's no need in Southington. There was never a foregone conclusion that this study would even recommend service in Southington. I think that's an important point of clarification. We were charged with looking at the New Britain and Bristol division as it exists and the surrounding towns to identify if there were opportunities to either improve existing routes or implement new ones. So there could, we could have said, no, Southington doesn't need it. So there was never a kind of intention to make it, like, just kind of force a route down, or to show a phase that doesn't actually mean anything. It was really just kind of a planning study as a first step towards these conversations, and then actual kind of ops conversations with the DOT. So I apologize for if that was unclear or seemed unpleasant for folks, but I just wanted to make that point of clarification, just for the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sure.
I'm Kelly Lockluss, I am at 135 Vernon Dale Drive. I'm also the campus director at Branford Hall, which is at 35 North Main Street, which is on Route 10. Councilman Barry, I completely understand your concern about being steamrolled at some point by making a general statement of interest and then turning over the entire plan to somebody else and letting them decide. And so I have a couple of questions. First is, DOT is already in Southington? Does DOT get to decide things like where to put exits? Or if there was going to be a toll stop somewhere on 84 going through Southington? Is that completely within DOT's purview? Or do, would you, as the members of the town council, have some say? Do you have some means of speaking with them and addressing that kind of thing? And I'm asking that as a legitimate question, because I, I don't want to have a situation where they decide to put a stop on the corner of West Street and West Center Extension, which I go out every day and is already kind of a nightmare. And so if that were to happen, is there a means that you have established already procedurally where you get to talk to the DOT, where you get to put in your two cents?
That's, that's what we're, that's exactly what we're asking for. That's where the piece where I'm asking representatives from, not CROG, but DOT, to give us answers, and it doesn't need to be tonight. I just want to clarify, it doesn't need to be tonight.
I have one right now.
Okay?
We've been asked the same questions over and over, and I thought we've come out pretty clearly. I mean, the town can vote in support of the proposal. If we don't have funding, we wouldn't look to do anything at all. At the same time, we don't go and just dump bus stops out in places. I had a prepared piece that I was going to try and address to you tonight, talking about the fact that just if you approve this, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. We then have to come out and look at, we have to run the routes and see whether the travel times are accurate. How many buses am I going to have to put out in order to make a 60-minute, a trip every 60 minutes? Am I going to be able to do it with the same amount of buses that I was used up there? I have to look at exactly where I'm going to place my stops and make sure it's the safest place for the bus to stop. Is there somewhere for the people to wait? What is the traffic in the area? I'm not going to do an official traffic study, but I am going to look at the traffic conditions in the area before I place a bus in that area, because I don't want to impede traffic. I don't want to block driveways. I want to make sure that my passengers have a safe crossing. Those are all things that would be looked at, and we would work with the town in order to do those things.
So I'll attempt, and I think, again, Councilman Trano and I, we're kind of going down the same route. I agree with everything you said, and I also think to get the ball rolling, that's why we were talking initially about Phase One, because we have more definitive answers, not all, but more definitive answers for that Phase One route, which would then allow us time to explore all those questions, for you to share that with us. Because right now, it seems very ambiguous for us to try to take any action.
And it is ambiguous, I agree. And that's why I'm saying, we would have to come out and do a much more in-depth study of operations. Hers was feasibility. On our side, it would be operations and what it would actually look like. We can't go into Bill, we can't go into Bob's Plaza without Bob's Plaza's permission. So I can't establish on private property a bus stop without their permission to come in.
So I guess the question is, can you guys do that, and then we can vote on if we want it or not?
It won't be next month. This is, this is going to be a lot of work for us to prepare this type of stuff. I'm going to have to go up to my CT Transit folks and redirect them from their other work to come to Southington to start looking at this type of stuff.
So if we were to move forward with, again, just to at least get the ball rolling in Southington, what is a proper timeframe that you would anticipate?
Depending on the duration, I'm going to say like a year to 18 months for us to even complete a real concept of what we want this, what we would all want it to look at and where the stops would be. And we have to do all the running times on the routes. It's not a simple thing to do.
Okay.
So why don't you do that? Like, why don't you do that?
I don't, I don't have the money to start the service, so why would I do all the work on the planning of it? If it's not even feasible for me to have the money to do the service.
I guess the question from my perspective is, it appears, the way I was listening, how this conversation was going this evening, is that you want, you need approval first, and then you do the feasibility and the plan after you already have the town approval. And I guess my concern was, well, why am I voting for something yes when I really don't even know what you're going to do?
So you can give me.
So I'd rather have you tell me what the plan is, and then I say, yeah, it's good, or no, this could be better.
You can give me approval, but it still doesn't mean I'm going to go out and do it unless I have the possibility of getting funding to do that right now.
Well.
And that's, that's a big issue for us.
It seems like the state does find the funding when they have to. I mean, I think there's, you can make the argument on a lot of projects that they said they had no funding and, suddenly there's funding.
Our new governor has us on a bonding diet, and so we've discontinued a lot of work that we were doing.
I'm so, I'm really confused. You cannot do this, I just, you can't just do a study and then bring the study to us, and then we will review it, and then we'll give you the green light, or not?
So what I'm talking about is allocation of the limited resources that we have to do our work in the state of Connecticut. And we would not be looking at doing an in-depth study of exactly where we're going to place bus stops and all of the needs to create a new route in Southington without some thought of that it's actually going to be able to exist.
Well, if there is some thought, that's what this is, right? We're all thinking about it. So if you can tell us this is what it's going to be, then we would be able to vote on it.
Okay, well, I'll see what I can do about allocating some resources at some point in the near future, but it's going to take us a lot of time to put that together for you. Apologize, we have a lot, we cover eight divisions of CT Transit across the state. Stanford, New Haven, Hartford, Waterbury.
We're just, I think, if I'm speaking for myself and then maybe some others, I think we're more comfortable knowing a plan than just voting on a possibility. So I'd rather have you put the work in, and if it takes a year, it takes a year, but at least then, when you come to us, it's, this is what we're, this is what we want to do.
But at the same point, I would like to know that the town is actually in favor of this or is pleased by it, before I go out and put my limited resources into that.
All right, so again, as I stated, as I stated before, if we can get some definitive answers, what you can answer for us, because I think there were some pretty direct questions. I am, Ms. Chair, I really need to move on with the.
Can you just form a, can you get, form a committee and work together?
I don't want to form a committee right now, because I think there's a lot of unknowns, and I also think it's important to have this conversation publicly at this forum. So we will try to make the most of the information that you can provide to us, and then make a determination at that point. But again, if any council members have any additional questions that we're not already, email Mr. Hayden so we can move on, because I think at this point, we're beating a dead horse tonight. But please send those questions to Mr. Hayden so we can move on, and then all digest that information together and make a decision moving forward. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, so we're moving on to reports of special committees. And the first special committee that met this month is the Apple Harvest Festival Committee. Pretty routine meeting. First of all, I'd like to just acknowledge and thank Curtis Robinson for donating a large amount of bottled water that he had donated to the town that will be used during the festival. So we appreciate that. Pleased to share, we have a new butterfly experience that we'll be adding to this year's festival. It should be new and exciting for especially our kids. And finally, a sponsorship update. So far in commitments, we have 51,000, and of that, 13,400 has been paid. The rest are commitments, but we're hoping to secure more as we move on. So if anyone's interested in being a sponsor for this festival, please contact Melissa Kukuzza. Any questions for the Apple Harvest Festival Committee report? Okay, Public Works, Chairman of the Committee, Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Works met on June 12th, and as we do at a lot of our Public Works meeting, we do talk about road improvements, and it's appropriate that there's an ordinance on the agenda tonight to continue our commitment to improve and maintain town roads. So there was some discussion on the roads issues, and hopefully, the ordinance tonight will pass, which will then give the town more financial ability to continue our commitment to the roads in Southington. There was our standard agenda, which includes many projects that are ongoing in Southington. There is continued discussion about the trail, which is the expansion of the rails, the trails from Lazy Lane all the way down to the Plainville Line. That is ongoing. Things are moving forward. It is still some time away, but the committee has kept abreast of all ongoing and updated issues. The Plansville safety improvements are also a major, important aspect of the Public Works Committee. We recently have, the Water Department has updated the water mains in downtown Plansville, and the Plansville safety improvements, that's the first step in trying to get that work done, the mechanicals, all the lines underneath the roads, get those completed before we actually move forward with the improvements to downtown Plansville. The Jew Lane and West Street intersection, they're continuing to submit shop drawings for the various components of the traffic signal equipment. It's a little bit more complicated than I think people might realize in terms of widening the Jew Lane and West Street intersection. The Engineering Department is working with landowners for a bridge replacement on Marion Avenue, which is over the Humiston Brook. There have been communication with some budding property owners to look at how we can have the least impact on private property owners when they do replace that bridge. The Spring Street Bridge is also a part of the agenda. The structural design is 100% complete. And we also had had other issues that we talked about in terms of just the regular road maintenance, the winter cleanup, the road sweeping, drainage, general maintenance, things like that. So the Public Works Committee is very busy. We're on top of a lot of different projects. And that's all I have to report. I don't know if Mr. Lombardi has anything he likes to add?
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay, great. And Councilwoman Misselli is also on that committee? You good? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next report. Property Tax Relief Committee, there was, we were scheduled for a report tonight from Jim Bose, who chaired the committee, and as council members will see, we have an appointment later on in the agenda. The reason we have that appointment is because there is one last piece that, due to state statute, we've passed our statute of limitations for that. So we'll reappoint the committee, but Mr. Bose had a work obligation this evening, so he could not be here, so he will be at the next meeting. So we'll table the property tax relief report, as well as the appointment till the next meeting, if that's okay with everyone. And I'd like to thank the committee members, Jim Bose, Chair Stat, along with Councilman Pulis, Councilman Dietzick, Councilwoman Morrissey, and from the Board of Finance, Suzonie and Toni Morrison, Terry Carmody from the Board of Education, Janet Mellon from Community Services, and Teresa Babbin from our town staff. So thank you to all those committee members, and again, we hope to reappoint them and hear the committee's suggestions at our next meeting. the committee's suggestions at our next meeting. Now, moving on to Town Managers' Report and Communications, Mr. Shota.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is the Board of Finance minutes. The meeting was mainly taken up by our public hearings, both for the $900,000 ordinance as well as the $2.9 million ordinance, as I mentioned earlier. Those are both approved unanimously, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the minutes.
Any questions for the manager on the minutes?
If no, no questions on that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to report to you, and I'd like them both to come up because they worked so hard on this. The President of the Union, Jason, can you come up, please? And Chief, can you also come up? Just wanna thank you publicly. This is the dispatcher's contract, and I know that when you talk about union contracts, everyone talks about how difficult they are, and let's be honest, they are difficult. But since, since I've been working as, as your manager, I've been trying to foster a little bit of, how should I say it? A friendliness when we have our, our union meetings. So, in this particular case, Jason, to your, to my right, he also serves on your, on your Diversity Committee, and of course, we all know Jack Daly. I wanna thank both of them for working very, very hard with my office. We did it without a lot of labor lawyer participation, so in this particular case, we saved the town a little bit of money on that side of it. Briefly, the contract is a three-year contract. The first year of the contract ends in four days, but in this particular case, overall, it's a 6.5% contract, 3%, 2%, and 1.5% going over the next two fiscal years. The other one's gonna be retroactive. And the reason why the first one is 3% was the fact that we had to bring several of the, the members into MERS, so they needed to contribute, and the town needed to contribute to get them into MERS, and that's why we have a little bit higher in that first year. So once again, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. We did bump up the, like, like all of them, we bumped up the insurance requirements in two areas, so I wanna thank Jason, his, his staff, the professionalism as the union president, and of course, Jack's leadership over at the PD, as well as the dispatcher's union. So, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Just thank you both for your work with the manager on this, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Town Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items to report on that are very similar, so I'll address them both at the same time. With respect to the road improvements and the acquisition of this municipal center, because those items involve substantial improvements to town property or acquisition of property, state statute required that this board refer those matters to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which you did on May 28th. On June 4th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did issue a favorable report, recommendation for both projects, so with respect to fulfilling that statutory obligation, those items are prepared for action tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Town Attorney? Okay. So moving on to Public Communications, so the microphone is now open to any resident. We, again, ask you state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes, please. So, Ms. DiPaolo.
Hi, Chris. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Town Council, Pamela J. DiPaolo, 54 Del Hati Drive, President of DiPaolo Furniture on 83 and 39 Center Street. The June 15th Saturday event, which shut down all of Center Street and Apple Alley, affected a large number of downtown workers who rely on their day-to-day earnings to survive. Their livelihood depends upon their work on any given day. They can't afford to lose that. The customers who would've tried to access Center Street drove away after finding the street blocked off, and because of this, the Pepper Pot lost its entire breakfast business. Sue Acevedo had to send her employees home with barely any work that day. The restaurants serving lunch lost most of, or all of their lunch business. Our store was quiet all day. This represents thousands of dollars in lost wages and customers unable to reach their destinations downtown. The impact of losing 50 parking spaces, yes, I counted them, on Center Street and Apple Alley is not about supporting a downtown public event or not, but it does represent a turnover of conceivably 250 to 300 vehicles coming in and out of that space over a seven or eight-hour period. It's about interruption of people's work lives. It's normally a busy Father's Day Saturday, and the expectation of a certain amount of business traffic is disrupted, and these businesses are forced to manage with pedestrian-only access and barricades being put up from 8:30 in the morning to after 3:00 p.m., with practically no business after 3 o'clock, except after 4:30 for the nighttime restaurants and restaurant customers. And I was there all day from 8:00 in the morning until after 5:00, so I personally observed this. The decision to cut off all 50 spaces to the downtown businesses and the choice of a prime-time Saturday in a major holiday weekend for about seven hours, eight hours, are two of the key problems. The third key problem is placing the event on Center Street and Apple Alley when there are already several major events which take place here, established ones, as we know, Apple Harvest Festival, Italian Festival, Concerts on the Green, Farmer's Market, and the Christmas Event. How many new events are going to be approved which involve major street closures at the expense of workers who have to earn their living in the center? New businesses are opening in the center all the time, and we all have to compete for the same parking spaces. No new parking has been added on-street, or public parking. We all depend on the on-street parking. I think it's time the town develop a procedure requiring organizations asking to hold events to do so in writing, months ahead, to the Town Council and the Town Manager in tandem, with any consideration for approval first to be brought to the attention of all downtown property and alternative locations other than the center be considered, because any increase in events there will cause more financial pain if large amounts of parking are consistently removed. A group trying to organize a community event may be a good idea in theory, but if a thorough study of its financial impact is not done, the event could easily prevent the bricks and mortar businesses from being able to thrive. I would like to see the town create a more transparent and accountable Special Events Committee to study each request with the accountability of designated people to consider the proposal and to bring both sides to the table so that a determination can be made to decide how it will impact the area it's being held in, and proposed for, to minimize parking losses, how the event could be enhanced by placing it in a location where there is either adequate parking or a location where it will not negatively affect a commercial district and its employees. Better communication and oversight is very much needed by the town to expand its responsibility and slow down its approval process for events, to allow for the input of property owners whose workers and businesses are hugely affected. What Southington does not need is to have added events which are fast-tracked by improper planning and makes the public question why there wasn't better town involvement and more structure to the approval process. Please consider revising the way this is handled. Please provide a more comprehensive oversight. We have boards and committees for many important functions in our town. Now is high time to address this before it gets serious and before unnecessary conflicts occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Duman, 89 Hitching Post Drive, Southington. Good evening, Town Council. My name is Ryan Duman. I'm the owner of Goosehead Insurance, located at 51 North Main Street, Southington, Connecticut. I opened my office earlier this year. I've been a longtime resident, and my, my wife has been a lifetime resident of Southington. We have been fortunate enough to establish our family here. On Saturday, June 15th, I participated in the good old summertime event on Center Street, sponsored by the Southington Merchant Association. I very much appreciated the opportunity to highlight my business services to the community during this event. I believe it was a great idea to extend the opportunity to the merchants within the area for the potential to meet local customers. Respectfully, I do understand it could have been, been an inconvenience to some business owners since the street was closed down for a mere couple of hours. However, I believe the pros outweigh the cons for the closure of the street, since there was ample parking with downtown Southington and access to side streets and parking lots. I imagine the disruption of business would have been minimal. The opportunity to showcase our business and create an environment to support our local merchants is appreciated. As a local business owner, as I imagine with other business owners in town, our success depends on meeting with new customers and extending our brand awareness to the community. I believe this event was a great opportunity to do so. I appreciate the town of Southington management being open-minded to such event. Our success leads, lends much to the partnership with the town. I understand this was the first year of holding this event, and just like anything, you do for the first time, you learn from the event, you make it better, you improve the situation for hopefully the following year. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. Teresa Malloy, owner of Paul Gregory's Bistro Cafe at 148 Center Street. I have to second what Ryan said. It was, the, the community that we have here in Southington, it's a great thing to get out to the public and have all those businesses promote our businesses, a good way to show everyone what we have. You have to give a little to get a little. And putting a town outside my business and promote and give away Rice Krispie treats to the kids and sell food, product that I offer to let them, to show what Paul Gregory's has to offer, is a way to show people downtown who's never been down there, coming off the trail. We had people that came off the trail, had no idea what this was all about, and it was, it was well-received. Yes, it was the first event, it was like White Christmas. It wasn't the greatest day for all the businesses, and I'm sorry, in, in reference to what Pam's saying about the closure of the street, quite frankly, I have to deal with this with the Italian Festival, and it's worse. It's three days to close down the streets for me. My business is shut down from Friday to Sunday. Saturdays and Sundays is my busiest business. Unlike the Italian Festival, yes, it's shut down. Liberty Street is backed, in the back area, is accessible to get in, to my back parking lot, which is the municipal parking lot. This event was erroneously, Liberty Street was shut down from Columbus Way in the back, no one could get down. And, you know what? I had a great business day. I, my breakfast was busy, my lunch was busy, my outside was busy, so, you know, I thought it brought business to the community. You have to give, like, again, give a little to get, to receive. It's a, it's an opportunity for people to see and show the kids and show what's, you wanna go back to the old sidewalk sales that were down there. I'm not from Southington, I'm from Berlin, okay? Berlin has a town, has a center of town, and I've been a resident of Berlin for 30 years. I don't do anything in Berlin. I'm here as a business owner and pay taxes as a business owner here. Berlin has nothing to offer what Southington has to offer, and we should be proud of what we're offering our community here. And White Christmas is like a, is it, what, what, the third year we're going into White Christmas, right?
Fourth.
Fourth year? And look at that success, look how many people that comes down. So, again, I, I literally say that we should do more of this. And personally, we counted, we counted the parking lots. There's 14 parking spots on Center Street, up, down to the, down to the stop sign at Vanity Rights. And I have to say, every day that I drive down that street at 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, there's not one parking spot available, so it has nothing to do with closure of a street. It has, that's the day. There's municipal lots in the back, there's municipal lots on, all over the place to go park. There's Ricky away to go park. People just don't wanna walk, that's the problem. And, you know, to me, closing the street for 15, 14 parking spots is not a big deal. And we have, I think it's just something that we have to look at our community and do more of. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Susan Yurlo Larson, 1214 Woodruff Street. I'll be brief, I'll just read what I have. As co-chair with Rob Flood-
I'm over there.
Oh, over there. Of the Southington Merchants Association, we wholeheartedly endorse a meeting to discuss protocols and procedures to ensure fair and equitable methods are put in place for closure of any street in town. It's our desire that downtown Southington become a destination in the state so that the entire community can benefit from the economic impact of local tourism and commerce, à la West Hartford, or if you've ever seen Collinsville, they have a champagne walk. It's awesome. That's all we want for Southington. We don't wanna interfere with business, we wanna bring business to town. That's what we're all about. Thank you.
I'm Rob Flood, 148 Deckard Drive, Plansville, Connecticut. I definitely hear what they're saying. We, we sent a formal letter, I hope you all received it. There's 32 paid members of the Merchants Association. We, we tried to work with them. You know, when you have a group of people, they don't always come when you ask them to, but we did our best, and we put together a committee, and it included the Barnes, and there's Marie back there, several other business owners. The attempt was to try to do a first-year event. Dawn remembers the first year for White Christmas. My wife saw my credit card bill. If I had not invested the money for the down payments on all those different areas, and Dawn did the same thing, we went on a big limb to the neighborhood of about eight grand that I would've eaten as a citizen because I thought it was time for us to have a winter event and combine two communities together. This was not an unsimilar task. I'm a volunteer, the Merchants Association, we don't get paid, you're all volunteers, I think you understand. We tried a first-year event. Was it as well-attended as I thought? No, nor was White Christmas. But year two, it tripled, and year three was over 8,000 people. That's how downtown merchants grow. That's how our downtown area grows. I have my own opinions. Personally, I would close Center Street to Liberty permanently. If you take an aerial view, which we have for White Christmas, and you look at the amount of community parking that the town already supplies, it's huge. It far outweighs many places like Collinsville or many other places on a per capita basis. We have a gold mine in downtown, but we're not paying attention to it. We need to pay attention to it. We have vacancies come and go. Lou Perillo and I talk about every single vacancy. We work together to try to find new places or new people to go in, not only as a bank vice president, but as just a member of the community. So I, I strongly recommend that a committee, as we talked about, or just a group, or working on process, I'm all for. And Pam, I agree with that part of your presentation. I think we can. I will state for the record that we did meet with the Town Manager, we went through all the protocols, we went and walked, Sue and I walked to every business on Center Street and notified them two weeks in advance of the event. Should it be two months? Well, that's a decision that you folks make, and I'm all for that. Whatever the protocol is, we'll be happy to do. So, please take a look at the letter, but I'm really in favor of doing everything I can to increase the economic development in our community. I'm gonna just sidebar, since this is a public, and I think I have about a minute, and this has to do with listening to the entire thing about the transportation. I wanna start off by telling you, I am in such favor of public transportation. We need to be able to move our citizens from one place to the other. But I didn't hear one question asked that I really would like the council to ask. What does public transportation cost on a per-mile basis, per person? This is what really Mr. Riccio is talking about. And I gotta tell you, another thing that was not mentioned tonight is that in our town, the United Way of Southington, in conjunction with the Main Street Foundation, last year provided 1,380 rides. Call it Uber, call it Lyft, but if you call, you get to get picked up at your home, you get brought to your doctor's, your hairdresser, your grocery store, New Haven, anywhere you wanna go, and then you return back to your home. They wait for you while you're there. Let me give you some statistics. It costs $29,000 for the actual transportation, 10,000 more for the entire program to start. That's $39,000 for 1,380 rides. If you divide that by the average per ride, which is 16 miles, you're at $1.99 a ride. That is Uber. That is Lyft. So I agree with public transportation, getting people from one place to another. I agree with getting all of our disabled people where they need to be, but we ought to really start taking a look at the dollars and cents of modern transportation. It doesn't have to be a bus to nowhere. It doesn't be, have to be a fast track that's not being used. What it can be is a very economical per-person, percent calculation, and maybe there are better ways. Maybe the state has to think about how they're funding overall transportation. It works great in a city if there's usage, but doesn't our school board have the same problem? We have buses that go around that have no students on them. What are the costs? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, may I just ask Rob a question?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Mr. Flood?
Rob, hang on just one second. I wanted to ask Rob just a question very quickly. Thank you for coming tonight. Rob, um-
Sorry for my golf attire, but, you know, I'm off work.
So, my question is, with the, with the Merchants Association-
Yeah.
Was there someone who was on duty the whole time of the event?
You mean from our, our location?
Yes.
Yes, Sue, Sue Larson, myself, were on duty the whole time. Oh, oh, police officers?
A police officer-
Yeah.
-told me they attempted to contact someone and they couldn't.
Well, actually, they did, and they got ahold of me, and I left two messages, and I didn't wanna talk about the police department, I, we have a phenomenal police department. There obviously was a communication issue that we didn't find out about until halfway through the day. And what happened was, we, we were told that they would do the same closure as they did for White Christmas, and that meant two officers were on Center Street at Liberty, and they put barricades there. As a matter of fact, when Pam's first concerns came out, we went to the police officer immediately and said, okay, her trucks need to go back and forth on Liberty, so please, do what you do for White Christmas, and that is to allow those trucks to go through. They take the barriers down, they let the trucks through, they let the trucks back. Unfortunately, we did find out that they, they put a barricade at the ends of Liberty. That was not a decision that was told to us, it was not part of the plan, it wasn't part of what we had discussed. I met with the police department three times prior to the event to, to go through all the safety plan. I also should mention that the Merchants Association did not wanna close Apple Way, and we were talking originally about going partway down the street, but because of some of the other merchant, merchants all the way down, like Witch Doctor and Paul Gregory's and many of the other ones, they asked if we could go the whole way. We didn't want to close Apple Alley because we felt that the people could cross by streetwalk. You know, people should be able to walk around our community. The police department forced us to close. For safety reasons, they said they wanted to close that whole area. So I'm all for looking at the event, making changes to the event. I'm all for having a procedure if we want to have it, as long as it's fair. If it's going to be something that the merchants have to do, well, then the Italian festival has to do it. And, and the, and the, you know, everything, everybody has to do it, including town events. And that would include the Apple Harvest Festival. So if there's notification procedures or whatever we have to go through, I'm all for it, so is Sue. Just got to make sure we're fair to all, all organizations.
I just wanted to clarify that someone was there.
Absolutely.
You nodded.
Yep, and, and actually, my friend Dawn over there sent me a text and said they were trying to reach me. We were all over, you know.
I saw Dawn.
Cell service is a little better in downtown Southington?
Right, but I was home at that time, and someone from the police department, actually, because they have my personal number from White Christmas contact, I think they assumed that I was probably involved in this and said, do you know Rob Flood's number? And we put him in contact.
We made a lot of accommodations, like, for instance, we changed our music venue to White Cr, or down at Witch Doctor because the church was having a memorial service in the morning, first congregational, and then a court of honor for the Boy Scouts. We made that arrangement for them, because they're part of the merchants group. We, we should tell you that there were others that called us so positive. Andy Bawa in his little small jewelry store, he, he had 19 new customers that day, you know? Yeah, that's more Main Street, but it's still the same concept, okay? I mean, we had a good day, I'll let you know, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just interject or add to the conversation that we had to do the same thing for White Christmas in terms of the police department. What we thought would work the first year, we tweaked the second, we tweaked some more the third, and I'm sure this year we'll be tweaking again.
Right.
Because it's sort of ever-evolving and you take what works and what doesn't work.
It's important to know that, and we had a, we had a debrief meeting last week, I forget the day, Rob, but we had a debrief meeting on it. Remember, the police department has an obligation based upon what's presented to it to make sure that the people are safe. I gave you guys an email how proud I was of Lieutenant Elliott, and I think he did a great job. Remember, the police have to think about what the event is, how many people they may expect, because it's, it's easy to do a downsize, but you can't bring people in if it gets past you. So Lieutenant Elliott, and I, and I said this in the email to everybody, he did a fabulous job on it. And like I said, it's a first year, were mistakes made, of course, but I've, I've been involved in so many different organizations where we did things in the first year. But I think certainly it's something that, that I fully support when we have these downtown events. Notification is everything, and I know that I personally requested that, that the, the organization go visit people.
And we did our best. Yeah. It's difficult, you know, you, you try to find an owner, but the owner's owned by a company, and the company's owned by another company, and that company's owned by another company in our downtown. So any support we can get from the town to say, these are who the actual owners are, would be helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elaine Sisson, I'm, and I live at 82 Paul Heights in Southington. I'd love hearing everybody talk about transportation. I don't think most people here have ever taken a bus. I take the 924 and 928 Express to Hartford whenever I go to Hartford. I never take my car, and it is an absolute pleasure. I am forced sometimes to wait, so I have to talk to people and be social, which is wonderful. I have met wonderful people on the bus. If we go to the Bushnell, it drops me off very close. I don't have to find a parking space, I don't have to deal with the traffic. I get on the bus, I come back to my car. If you want to go out for dinner and have a drink, you don't have to worry about driving home, because one hour for each drink means that by the time I get home, I can safely drive my car from the commuter lot. Bus stops, if you go to a different town, look for the signs, most of the time it's just a sign that has the bus route number on it. There aren't too many locations with, with bus shelters, although we do have a bus shelter now in Southington, which is, you know, pretty nice. That bus I've taken in the last couple of years has been, become busier and busier even during the day, and that's the 928, which is off-peak. I think the reason it's not used is because most people in Southington don't know about it. You can go to a baseball game, you can go to the theater, you can go out to eat, you can go to towns all along that fast track and easily walk to so many places. So while you're thinking about this, remember that DOT will work with the police department, they're not going to put a bus stop in a dangerous place. It's just not going to happen, they're not stupid. The other thing I just wanted to mention, since I volunteer at the Arts Center, for that event, we had a couple that came up from Long Island to go to the library's Comic-Con to spend their day in Southington before they went to the Dave Matthews concert up in Hartford. So people actually see Southington as a destination and a place to go. And I know a lot of you on this council have a lot to do with that. So all that work you put into it is paying off, and these events aren't stupid, they actually bring people into town. And that's it. Thanks.
Elaine, if I just, I just want to make a comment. You talked about you using the bus out of the, is it the lot across from Sliders down in Plansville?
Yes.
And people don't realize, they do run pretty late at night, too.
They run, you can, last bus leaves at 11 o'clock at night.
And a lot of people don't realize, they could go to the Yard Goats game, which would be very convenient, they could go to Hartford Stage, they could go to the Bushnell, they can go to the Convention Center.
I went to the Convention Center on the best Friday night.
And if someone wanted to, you know, not, you know, not worry about drinking and driving or not worrying about driving on 84, it's very convenient, it's very quick.
Yes.
And it's right up to Fast Track. So I'm glad you brought that to light here, because it's a real asset that I don't think many people know, and people in Southington know that we, that they can use.
They actually have it on the weekend. And once you get up to Hartford, they have something called the Dash that takes you around to all of the major venues. It usually runs until 7 o'clock at night, but when they're having big events, it runs until 1:30 in the morning sometimes. So, you know, you can get a Tim Rye ticket, my husband, if something happens with his car, can just take the bus home. He works in West Hartford, and he always has that Tim Rye ticket in his wallet. So I love it, and I hope when you're thinking about public transportation, some of you try it, just to see what it's like.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Ellen Hobson, but everyone calls me Mel, I know many people in the room. I currently live at 113 Blatchley Avenue, almost directly across from where the pump station is going to be closed down and by the Curtis Open Space, Green Space. I come before you this evening to make you aware of a stormwater drainage issue that's plagued my house and the property on Blatchley Avenue, and even downstream through the Curtis property to South End Road and onto the Quinnipiac River and the Quinnipiac watershed. So since September of 18, my house has really been plagued. Mr. Palmyra recently became aware of this and has pledged to look into it. I've contacted attorney, town manager, Shota's office, and hope to meet with him. His secretary responded to my phone call, but we haven't been able to book that yet. Town planner, Rob Phillips, and assistant town engineer, Jim Gepone, have been working on this for five to six months and have thanked me for my patience, which is kind of wearing thin. This is very worrisome to me. Some of you may remember when the PZB or Planning Zoning Commission was going through the Hillcrest Development request on approval process for the property off 322 Marden Waterbury Road, which was discussed, modified several times, and approved in 2006, 2007, 2008. You may remember me from that time. I spoke out with concerns about public health, because I am a nurse, related to the arsenic-contaminated soil up there, to building over the nearby aquifer, about ecological effects of the site development, and about concerns about stormwater drainage and runoff. I'm directly downhill from the Hillcrest property. The minutes from the public hearing and the planning and zoning meetings back then document my concerns. My concerns are also documented in the case of Hillcrest v. Southington Conservation that Connecticut Superior Court Judicial District on New Britain, March 6, 2009, number CV 08410, 4016248-S, that memorandum of decision. So the stormwater is the current issue, and I just want to bring it to your attention. Pictures are worth a thousand words, so I brought 10 copies of pictures, which I'll circulate and I'll walk through very, very quickly. There's a 12-inch pipe that begins in a culvert-inver in my backyard, runs about 104 feet under my yard, and connects to the town's storm sewers. The town has a right of way to access and maintain that pipe. The pipe has been in existence for over 60 years. I have lived at Blatchley Avenue for 25 years, and this pipe has always handled the same stormwater damage without issue, except once in 1995, when the pipe got clogged by debris and I was able to open it quickly. Now, in the past six or nine months, this culvert-invert and pipe has been overwhelmed three times, causing flooding in my yard, driveway, garage and basement. I've called the fire department, who helped each time. Town departments have helped as they're able and allowed to. The stormwater runoff from Hillcrest property has inundated my yard, garage, basement three times since September 2018, specifically on September 25, 18, 12/21, 18, and most recently January 24, 19, six months ago from tonight. The only way to stop the water flow on 124 and save my furnace was to dump an entire dump load truck of sand in front of my garage door. It's still there, I'll show you the pictures so you can see them. Please let me walk you through the pictures, and for the people who are watching on TV, sorry, I can't show you the pictures, it would take too much time to show a video. The first picture is a picture of what I will call normal stormwater drainage out of the Hillcrest property into, in the dry stream in the culvert in my backyard. The second picture is the normal, normal culvert and flow. There's a 12-inch pipe at the back of that culvert. Notice the culvert top made out of pressure-treated two-by-sixes and the mulch. Next picture number three is my driveway, filled with muddy water, which has come down through the Hillcrest property. Picture number A1 is that same stream bed you saw in the first picture, filled with more water from snow this winter. Picture number A2 is the culvert completely filled, my backyard filling up, and the culvert cover floating in the water. Picture A through three is my backyard filled with water, which normally isn't there. The fourth picture, the same thing, you can see some of the water levels on the bench there. Again, you see that, that culvert floating, the stream from the water from Hillcrest full. Picture number six is sandbags that the town graciously provided me, put in front of my garage door. I went out January 23 at midnight and put 12 sandbags on the outside and 12 sandbags on the inside, 40 pounds each, not bad, I am a nurse, okay? The very next day, before I left to, to work, I set up a pump, I had my brother on call to go check that pump. I was called by my neighbors across the street and came home to water raging in that yard. The next picture number seven is the chip seal being lifted off the road, there's a cul, there's a storm drainage drain right under where that water's bursting there. Picture number eight is the water flowing from my side yard and through my driveway, through a trench that the fire department dug. Picture number nine, so is that same trench. Picture number 10, again, more of the chip seal lifting up. Once the chip seal lifted up, the town was gracious enough to provide people with more sandbags to help out because town property was being damaged. Picture number 11 is, again, the water in my driveway with all the mulch from my backyard floating in it. Picture number 12, 11, sorry, is the water streaming down my back stone stairway. Picture number 13 is water in my driveway, the entire dump load of truck, of sand in front of my garage door. And then picture 19 is, again, a closer picture of that truckload of sand. So it, right now, I find my, well, this makes my worst nightmare from 2000 to 2008 a reality. It makes my house non-sellable, not that I intend to move out of Southington. My garage is non-useable at present and hasn't been for six months. Think about the ice storms. I leave for work at 5:00 in the morning, so I'm out there chipping ice off my car when I could have had it in the garage. I fell a few times. Right now, it's unusable. Every time heavy rain is scheduled, I'm like, uh-oh, what am I going to do now? I've communicated with Jim Gepone, and he suggests leaving the mediation in place, which means I can't use my garage. So I originally communicated with Mike Del Santo, and he referred me to Rob Phillips and then, and then Jim Gepone. As I said, they're working on it, but it's just really slow. There's a smaller drainage pipe in my driveway that I can't repair until the other problem gets taken care of. My driveway might need to be replaced. I've been told my entire backyard might need to be re-engineered to change the groundwater flow. It takes hours to clean the water and mud out of my basement each time it floods. Insurance doesn't cover it. Commercial companies gave me quotes of $5,000 each time to clean up my basement. There's still dried mud covering 70% of my basement floor, because the only way to get it up is to re-wet it, squeegee it, shop back it, carry it up my stairs, through my living room or through my kitchen, and dump it outside. So there's a lot of mud on my floor still, it, it works. I just bring this to your attention, and I'm welcome, any questions, comments or advice. And thank you for your time this evening and for all the good work you do for our town.
Just a comment. First of all, thank you for bringing it to my attention. Within an hour, I did forward the concerns to the, to the manager, and I'm glad Mr. Hayden is here, who's the Director of Public Works, he's going to look into it first tomorrow, tomorrow. So I know you've been very patient, and I apologize that this has even happened, so hopefully with Mr. Hayden's support, we can look into getting some corrective action right away for you.
And Mr. Hayden's team has been good about coming out when they can. It's just kind of a nightmare situation, and I'm stuck right in the middle and right in the, in the low area there. But the water also cascading down on a South End Road really causes hazards down there, too. If you drive up and down South End Road, and that's right by the area, well, it's a little bit south of the area, we're talking about the lovely development going in, which was the zoning change. So it's just an area that needs some attention to it. So I appreciate any help and a guide, if anybody needs any more information, help.
Absolutely.
I have a quick question. First of all, I'm really sorry that this is happening to you, and you seem really nice considering what you've been through.
My brother-in-law, Dave Brayfield, talked to you. I don't know whether he'd say I was nice, but I've tried to be really patient.
Yeah, how long have you lived there?
I've lived in Southington 63 years, I've lived there 25 years.
Okay, in the 25 years you've been in that, have you ever had anything like this occur? Or is it just since Hillcrest has been developed?
Once, a year after I bought the house, a piece of half-rotted wood blocked the culvert. It literally was across the 12-inch pipe. I put on a wet suit, that was a few years ago, I was a little younger, and jumped in, much to the dismay of my neighbors, the MacRees and the Robinsons, and pulled out the hunk of wood, and then the water flowed.
Right.
Now, every time the fire department's been there, they threatened me, don't you dare go near that, because there's enough water coming through that one could get sucked into that 12-inch pipe.
Wow.
And I'm not such a strong swimmer as I was 20 years ago, but, anything else I can answer for you?
As I said, we're going to look into it right away for you and hopefully get you some answers.
And Mark, I think you were out of the room, I called your office and said, can we set up a half an hour to talk? If that, if there's a need for that, that's great, and if not, that's fine. I don't want to, you know, take up your busy time.
And I did already share everything that you shared with me with Mr. Shota, so he's aware of everything, and like I said, Mr. Hayden will be our point person.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Fashello.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Celia Fushello, 82, out of Nevin, Southington, Connecticut. Couple weeks ago, I was here because I had one move out of speak. Three policemen and took me away. That's, that's something, you know, a long time ago, and the chief was over here, too. I wrote the register, there were the chief police, and like, hey, buddy, out, but nobody ever answered. They only know when I have to pay tax. And with that in mind, I'm looking back, when soon he became a chief, he hang after me like a pig. And I would just remind, they're really, they bother me, at least. Every time we go to town hall and speak with someone, they all, I have to like a lawyer. And you have to put your head down, and then you go again. I'll just, with that in mind, just something about the history.
I'll pass them down for you, Celia. Go back to the microphone.
How much I had in store in this town. Look today, 73.
Here, extras.
Every time I used to go at that time to, I used to be because first was Roger Muller, then there was Adam, the engineer, and then it became Tranquillo. And nobody explained to Mr. Tranquillo or anybody else what really the town manager and Mr. Mieda done. And besides that, like, because I am an immigrant, I'm not that good for the, even if a police because I'm, they want to make you a kind of dump. And that really bothered me. And it's such a rather active, the Mr. Tranquillo role. I end up on 51, and you know why? I'm glad it's not terrible, but I'd take out a pallet of calcium and like, and just give him the fat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elio.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
It was written December 85, when Mr. Mieda took over. And then another guy said, "What was done and Mr. Fushello was wrong." Kelly took over the place as a Republican lawyer because of the Democrat, he wasn't a good. I don't know too much about, you know, I thought you go to town hall and the guy you do is supposed to be. But many people know what happened at the council. Certainly, I have to say, gone a long time ago. At Sakalaski, I will now pay $1,300, the last I told her. If I knew where you were, I would never hire you. Such a lie, dishonest. But the council, it's a mob. You have the power to distinguish what was right or wrong. That's why you're there for. I want to get paid. That's all. I give all of the documents. It's not such a thing. The gentle lady to the Mr. Tiano explained exactly where it was. I want to get paid. And my son told me something about trying to have a time tonight. But if anything, you can count on, because
Thank you, Mr. Fushello.
I want to be here, and I would like to be paid a terminated this because if you look the day
Mr. Fushello.
I live so miserably in every dream. You
Thank you, Mr. Fushello.
If you have a new family, I want to see how you feel.
Thank you, Mr. Fushello.
You go to police, they arrest you. Who you have here? Nobody. People is me, eh? You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Last call, any other residents would like to speak? Okay, so I'm going to close public communication, and we're going to move on to our agenda. So we're moving on to old business. First item is action on the 824 for the $900,000 for the road improvement as discussed in the public hearing. Just looking for a motion.
Chair will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Great. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we'll call a roll, please.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. I'm looking for a motion for action on the 824 for the cost related to the John Wyche So Municipal Center.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the action on the 824 for the costs related to the John Wyche So Municipal Center.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ricchio. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lombardi.
I'll make a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think just based on the few comments that we heard tonight, it's interesting because the people are criticizing what happened at the original inception of this building. But let's, let's talk about the decision in front of us that we have. And I say "we," I don't mean the council. This is a decision being made by the public. It's going out for referendum. So if there are people against it, by all means, go tell your friends and family that you're against it. But if you're for it, we should understand why we're for it. And if this does not pass the referendum, as was presented in the presentation tonight, we're going to spend $400,000 plus per year on leasing it, and we're going to continue to lease it. So, you know, I think the presentation was done very briefly with enough detail so that everybody can understand it. So I think it's a decision that the taxpayers of the town, I think it would be a benefit for the, for the voters to vote yes on this referendum this fall, this fall. And I also appreciate the clear distinction of the Board of Finance's opinion on paying cash for this project, which, which doesn't mean that the taxpayers aren't going to pay for it, it just means that the taxpayers already paid for it. So I just think that the presentation was great, and I look forward to assisting in getting that information out there this fall.
Thank you. Excellent. Mr. Ricchio?
Yes, just to clarify a couple things that were made under public comment, and that is that this particular building has nothing to do with the two referendums that were put out there for town hall expansion. It was a completely different project for far more money than is for this building. Tonight, we are looking at what is before us, and it just, it's just simple common sense, spend $400,000 a year or buy it. And if you capped out on a triple net lease, $400,000 a year, I didn't, I did it last meeting, but I think it's worth like, you know, based on the income of this building to the owner, this building is worth probably $8 million to the owner based on the income that he receives from it. So for us not to buy it is just really poor judgment. It's like you almost have to buy it. And we're looking at what's presented to us now. What the town council that was in place that put the plan together back then is what they did. We own it, right? I mean, we're living with it today, and to spend $400,000 a year or a couple million dollars to buy it, I mean, it's like a no-brainer, quite honestly. So I wholeheartedly supported it back then. I think it was a great idea, and it was creative. And I think, as I alluded to with regards to the public transportation, government needs to really start to get creative because we just can't afford not to be. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dietzick?
I have a quick question. So this is the first year we have the option to purchase it, correct?
We're starting our eighth year. It's at the end of the eighth year. So you go to referendum this November, we, if, assuming everything goes out and the voters vote for it, in September of 2020 would be the purchase of it.
So this is the only option we'd have to purchase it?
No, it'd be an option the following year.
Oh, each year there's an option?
Yes. It's a 12-year, it's a 12-year lease, but in this particular case, if you look at it, you, if you don't do it in the first year, you're spending rental money.
Right, so the, so the purchase price would kind of be linear? It would just be lease, lease payments less?
As years go on, it goes down a little bit, but that does not equal the money that we're paying.
Okay.
And, you know, to Mr. Ricchio's point, I think that was the whole idea back when the, this project was introduced to those of us who were on the council, was that really the way that it worked was to definitively purchase the building the first year that it was available in year eight.
I know that that, the administration at that time made that argument to the council at that time.
Any other comments? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Excellent. Item C, action on the ordinance appropriating $900,000 for road improvements.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes. Okay, that passes. And finally, action on the ordinance appropriating roughly $2.9 million for the cost related to John Wyche So Municipal Center.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to appropriating $2,930,000 for costs related to the acquisition of the John Wyche So Municipal Building, as long as there is no substantial change in the town's undesignated fund balance, intends to use the undesignated fund balance to purchase the John Wyche So Municipal Center if the referendum is approved in this year's November election.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That language that Mr. Barry said is very important because should there be some type of disaster incident in town where we need to tap into that undesignated fund balance, it does not tie the council's hands now, but our intent is to use that money, as Mr. Lombardi said, this is money that residents have already paid. We have a very healthy fund balance, and we could use that and pay cash for this building and not further the commitment to the taxpayers. So with any other comments? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes. Okay, so that passes. Great. Action on the Board of Finance Minutes. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Finance Minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Minutes of the Board of Finance. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that passes. Item F, action on dispatcher's contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the, approve the action on the dispatcher's contract in the hopes that we can do more of these kinds of negotiations. I think it was very well done.
Excellent. We have a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.